Okay. We'll call the meeting to order here. Eight oh three.
Four or five miles.
I'll accept your motion to accept the Jeddah.
Move to a not be Jeddah.
Second.
Call a favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. First up on the list here is the perception survey data.
We have a lot of different looks at things. I told you last time spoiler alert, not much changed. But there are still some, some things to see. Oh, what is that sign? So, good news this year is we have especially with parents, huge increase in numbers. So, the first number is this year, the one in front sees us last year. Seeing too, we had a lot more students and a lot more parents. We didn't have as many teachers, so last year we all did it together on one of the PD days. And this year that day was conference day, so that didn't work out quite as well. So, we'll find a way to incorporate it into some meetings sometime next year. But, but that was awesome with parents. That's most parents we had do anything. If you think like voting, there's lots where we should have like three hundred, three fifty-ish. So, four hundred is always sort of on like an outside reach goal for us and demolish that. So, I thought that was awesome. Yeah, and like I said, kids, that's really good. Eleven twenty-three, so we only had, it was third through twelve, that the opportunity to do this, that's a lot. So, it really did turn out. I just wanted to remind you that this one is one that we contract out with an outside provider for perceptions. Because they know what they're doing, they've done this for a long time. You can see they have a ton of people and give a ton of surveys. So, it's nice because we get that comparison data that we don't get when we do our own things. So, this probably looks familiar if you remember last year. So, they color code for us anything green that's in the seventy-fifth percentile or above. And anything that's in red is in the twenty-fifth percentile or lower. Just to remind her, if you're not percentile people, you would expect that we would be at fifty percent. So, anything that is green is way above where you'd expect it to be. And anything that's red is way below where you'd expect it to be. So, this is kiddos. So, we had quite a few things in green with them. Then this is like, it's kind of where the spoiler alert comes in. So, they coded anything in green that was a statistically significant change up. And anything in red was a statistically significant, it's hard to say, change down. So, we didn't have anything that changed much up or down. Parents had even more green. And still really white. Also, not much changes way up or down with the parents. And then the last one, the same thing for staff. Almost everything is in green on staff, which is amazing. And you can see there's quite a bit on there, literally eight and ninety. So, like that ninety, ninety-fourth in staff experience. So, again, if you're not percentile people, that's saying that there were only six percent of the people who were like us that took the survey. That's worth better than we did on that. So, those are really good. And then also no big changes upward or down in year to year. So, then, these are just a whole lot of words, but we went through for staff, students and parents. What individual statements were top three, bottom three. So, we've got those for everything. I combined the top part is raw score, so one out of five. We're trying to get things near four, things near five. So, the top scores just our raw score. So, this is our top three, just straight scores, again, one out of five. And then the bottoms are our highest percentile scores. So, our top raw score and percentile score was feeling safe at work. And again, that means only six percent of people who were like us. And if you remember, they tried to find out, there's ten thousand surveys that they gave this year. They tried to find the schools that are the most like us, that are somewhere in size, SES, those kind of things to make a cohort group. So, those are the percentages against that group, not against everybody who took the survey. Our second was having a healthy relationship with our coworkers. And having a process to ensure every student has a connection with an adult in the school. That one ties, I gave you a copy, this one of just the strategic plan, just to remind us of our action steps for focus on this year. That one is one of them, so it was nice to see that that showed up. We've been really hard on re-energizing, advising and building in Wave Finder, which is intended to help build a sense of connection. So, we were happy that that one showed up. The other one, which as you know is going to change is technology, leadership and staff. So, it was really nice to see that that one was very high. They've been working so hard, so I'm really glad that that. And again, when we took the survey, keep in mind that was October seventh, so they will, we don't leave them here, they won't leave here a couple of months. So, I thought it was awesome that that's already showing up, even though it's a pretty new thing. And then in terms of our cohort, our teachers feel like our pay practices are fair. So, here's bottom three from the staff. Those of you that saw this last year, one and two were, I think, our bottom last year, if I'm very close to the bottom, still are. Good news is you'll see when we talk about trends that they're less terrible than they were, but those are still bottom. And you'll also remember comparatively, we really feel like we struggle to get the support we need for our students with special needs. We are definitely serving more and more. Remember, we've added a physician and a half in the last like two years, three years? I was sure somebody heard that.
Two.
So, in the last two years, we've added a significant amount of staff, but it's still good keeping up with the needs that we have and our staff definitely feel that. So, that one, again, on the other side means that ninety percent of people answered that question earlier than our staff did. And then the middle, again, both our middle ones are actually above the average, so it's hard to say that they're the bottom. But number wise, they are the bottom. That's the lowest percentile we have, but that's still above where you'd expect us to be. But, information, I don't know on this one, we'll have to do some more talking to staff. I don't know if the keyword on this one was timely or effective, or maybe both. But we'll do some data to understand that a little bit better. And that one, you can see percentile and it also showed up in straight score. So, we'll try to find out more about that one. And then again, discipline should have been another way and another place. So, pretty, pretty consistent that discipline is top of mind with our staff. Here's our parent top three. Number one, facilities are clean and well-kept. The school provides opportunities for parental involvement. Teaching with material that reflects backgrounds, communication anywhere member is on their strategic plan. And so, I thought it was great that we're in a percentile there. And then you'll see there's a specific question on here about communication, so I'll tell you about in a second. Treating kiddos with dignity and respect and having high expectations. So, those are all really good things that our parents appreciated. Bottom three, opportunity to provide feedback. And it's interesting, that one was top one number, but there are a lot that are like that. You've got to keep in mind that just because of comparison doesn't mean that they're not a really high scorer or vice person. Like, it's just how you look at it. So, those were the two ways we looked at it. But it did show up on the top and then percentile, not aside. Staff showed up. This makes me a little sad, but it is something that we focused on, so hopefully that'll get better. And with the idea of having one person and trying to reestablish that as the main advisor is one of the action steps for this year. Addressing bullying and feeling welcome are the bottoms. And again, that fifty-fourth is, that just happened to be, there wasn't another, but that one again is above where you'd expect us to be compared to what we're. Tending to your students. Having somebody to sit at lunch if they need help. That's amazing, if they need help, that they know their teachers will help them. And I put lots of ninety, there were, I don't know, maybe five, maybe six, there were a bunch of ninety seconds. So.
It was a tie.
Yeah, so I didn't have room to type all of them, but there were a lot. Our kids' scores comparatively were really high. But the highest of the high were getting help outside of class and trying my best. I feel really good about their friend group and social support. Their bottom, trying to make those connections to what they're learning. I wonder, we've been talking so much about cell phones and that's been top of my mind lately, that I wondered about that group work. I wonder if that's always been a thing, because it has to some extent.
I think it's.
We like working in groups and historically.
They hate it.
But I did wonder if that one had any connection in itself. And again, you'll notice, you'll see in a few minutes, that most kids at the school follow the rules. That one's still at the bottom, but that actually was one of the trending upward ones as well. I believe talking to people outside of school about what I'm learning, I feel like that was our bottom last year with the kids, I think. So, I think that one was pretty consistent in that way. And then again, I hate to say any of these are trends because they're tiny little changes, but these were the ones that changed the most. So, the biggest upward trends, those first two actually are, those are almost significant. I think they coded anything that like fifteen is significant, so that one was close to significantly different. But almost twelve percent, that connection with one adult and then access to technology support, those were both big upward trends with staff. Kiddos is the biggest upward trend was kids following rules. And for parents, that communication was timely and changed.
And again, that's only two months into.
Parent square?
Yep.
And again, these are all like one percent changes, but these were the biggest down changes. Our staff, the amount of work that I have to do is reasonable. Students, my guardians help me as much as they can. I believe that was one of our top last year. So, I think again, any change when you're that high. And then, parents having somebody to feel comfortable contacting again, hoping. Is that regular predictable communication from their advisors and from the principals and from Dave and I? Hopefully, that's going to continue to change up a little bit. And then this was a question that was just about communication. See if we're to see where we fell out on that. We did increase a little bit percentile. We don't have point room to improve in that way. Straight number we do, because we really hope most of our scores are in the fours. So, we definitely like to get in the fours on that one. But, quite a bit better than it was, and that was quite a bit better than the feedback we'd gotten before that. So, definitely, and you all remember that, certainly a big one to address smoothly. Okay, so, happy for, like I said, for once you can hit to talk to somebody here about what you saw, what turned it out. If you have other questions, if there's anything more specific you want us to look at or look for, we're happy to. But that was kind of the, the big overview of today. I guess that this two biggest things from that are those white sides and grueling sides, right? Most already it was incredibly positive and not only above our comparison group, but in the top quartile of our comparison. The fast majority of things and longitudinally, not a lot changed through the year. I would suggest, I definitely won't have to decide or talk about this today, but I would definitely throw out that we might want to consider not getting all of these every year. Because they, I think, from a statistics standpoint, it's hard to see a ton of change year to year to year. And it is expensive, the survey's about ten thousand dollars. So, I think we might want to think about like alternating, maybe the director and the admin surveys that all the staff take. Maybe alternating those with school perceptions, because that's also a pretty good ordeal to analyze, because we analyze that one in-house, so that takes a ton of time. And then, maybe to keep that habit of taking something at conferences, because that seems to be going well for us. Maybe we could focus on more targeted, like, other specific things, like trying to get more information about particular things rather than big picture. Though I'm just not sure of the picture. And then they have two years, so I don't know, we can do it for another year and see if things are very different. But, like I said, it's still from a financial and time standpoint. I'm not sure that we want to do that every year, so we might want to consider alternating things.
And we don't want to wear people down.
Yep, absolutely. And we do a lot of staff exit at the time. So, I think for them specifically, don't use every year. So, just something to consider.
I would say one off which I had about that, that maybe like asked a question about is, it seems like on the faculty and staff side of things, it had, one of the highest things was that they believed that there was a good system for parents to be engaged, to have a person to go to. And yet, it was the one that was down trending for parents. They felt like they didn't have a person that they could go to. And so.
I think the staff one is student.
It is, there is a difference there.
Yeah, I think the staff one is student, I think the parent one is parent.
Okay.
But similar.
Right. And so, I guess, it's nice that, I mean, that maybe the process on the staff side has sort of been more addressed and processed. So, it's maybe in the process side and not limited to the point that it's being felt on the backside. But, just wondering maybe if the process isn't being, you know, like, if the faculty think, oh yeah, well, we're, we're communicating more. And so, by us communicating, that opens the door to say they can communicate back. But maybe it still feels like a one-way communication where it's still the school discommunicating out, but not empowering that reverse communication to say, hey, if you do have a problem, I'm your, you know, maybe it's a messaging from the advisors or whatever to say. It's a two-way street, like, so if there's anything you need, like coming back in, it's just observations.
Yep, good point.
I would, I would agree with blatant statement, I'm your contact, might be really helpful. I don't know, I've talked to my wife to see if that actually happened, because she's the contact person for all my kids. But, I, I don't get the sense that's the case. I think it'd be great, just a blatant statement, I'm your contact person. Two-way street with me, if you have a problem, start here and we can take it from there. And it might be, might clear up a lot of that.
Being newer to this school, like, I wasn't sure who I should contact for my kids. Because I'm new to the whole advising system, because I think first level didn't have it. So, it did take a little bit for me to know, okay, I'm supposed to go with the advisor first.
Absolutely.
So.
We also are over sixty percent of parents interacting back with their teachers on parent square. So, they have either responded to a post, sent a message, interacted in some way. So, we're increasing that two-way communication too. So, that's just, can keep building.
I think once the teachers reach out through that, then like as a parent, oh, this is how I can easily connect. But again, just knowing that initially, I think is not, and I know parents first knew, so.
I was gonna say, I would also say, so we took this October, how we're gonna get things working at the middle school. It was a solid month or two.
Yeah.
We had a really hard time, so, I don't know, a bunch of details you don't care about. But, infinite campus connects to parent square and that communication, that link wasn't working great. It worked great at elementary grade up to that, didn't work as well at middle and high, so that took us for sure a month. We just need to get going. So, I don't think that, I don't think the weekly advisor stuff, it may just started or hadn't even started in October. So, hopefully that will rip a little bit down.
I think Ryan brings up a good point, though. I think we're probably, and this is just a hypothesis or whatever the word would be, Friday morning. But I think we're, we're probably seeing the fruits of the families and parents that are comfortable and may already be reaching back outright. Like, and are comfortable reaching back out to advisors and may already be doing that. It's, it's, it's the ones that hopefully we're, we're breaking down those barriers and those doors with the ones that aren't comfortable and may not have reached out in the past. So, those are, that's that next group, that next subsection of how do we, you know, make sure that that's now two-way communication. I think we're on our way to it, but I do think that is progress, but that should be our next goal, not just the ones that we're probably able to get to anyway. How do we, how do we break that one down so that we get everybody?
I wonder how parents would have felt if they took this survey after their conference. I think a lot of them took it in the hall before they went in for conferences.
That's what I do.
Hopefully, they made a connection once again. And it does seem like, I noticed as a parent on my teacher's post, that there are a lot of comments. And maybe they got those all by email in the past, so I don't know. But, there are a lot. And so, like on field trips and that kind of stuff, there are always, I definitely see that interaction. It seems like some people are comfortable, more comfortable with that than they are maybe reaching out directly through email or calling or those kind of things. So, I think, I'm wondering if that might be, because it seems like that's the way a lot of people communicate is through text messages and things. So, maybe that'll be now, maybe that I'm in there before this will work.
The other thing I noticed that in our focus areas, we haven't necessarily addressed, is there were several things about culturally relevant material. Right? I can't remember exactly the statement, but that's not one of our focus areas, and I wonder if that shouldn't change. But that's a pretty low score.
We noticed, I don't have demographic data on our parents, I only have demographic data on our kiddos. But if our demographic data for our parents matches our demographic data for our kiddos, we were severely skewed in terms of our white parents taking the survey. We were definitely not in the ballpark of our student makeup. I don't have parent demographic data, so I don't know that our parents exactly represent our student demographics, but guess they're probably close. So, we're about fifty-fifty and the survey, survey, I think we're seventy-five. So, we were definitely skewed, because in most schools, that question's on there to acknowledge the importance of representing the diversity in your school. And so, that response did not represent that in our school. So, definitely worth, definitely worth thinking about. But we did notice, like I said, I don't have the data to know that our parents might have different racial makeup than our kiddos. But I think they probably at least in the ballpark. So, if they are, we're about twenty-five percent off of our mostly Hispanic. To get a real answer for that one, we might have to dig in more, do another survey.
Right.
Yeah.
A little deeper, because that's a really broad, that could range from, I mean, you can get all sorts of different answers, right? I would, I would love to see some more data on that, so we would know what direction to head.
Only comments that I saw, a few of them that were related to that were about politics with particularly high school teachers. There were, I don't know, maybe five, but there were a few that referenced they thought their teachers in high schools shared too many of their political beliefs or those kind of things. So, I would, I were making a hypothesis, I would guess those kind of things.
I'm sure there's, what I hear in the community, there's some of that for sure. But I would be interested to know if it's on the other end of the spectrum as well. Do we have people feeling that way? I don't know, I would love for, and maybe that's one thing we do is develop our own survey instead of doing this particular survey every year. Is, well, let's take a deeper dive into this and maybe not do a whole perceptions one and do this kind of survey. This really broad one every two or three years to see if we make changes. That would be a thought that I have.
That's definitely what I was thinking. And we've got a whole, well, I certainly didn't develop it, but we have used a focus group protocol in the past that's intended to be used for that reason, you find things in surveys that you want to dig deeper into or something. We typically do it with the staff, but we did it somewhat strategically planning last year. We had quite a few focus groups. So, we definitely, but I do think it's a good idea, like I said, to alternate. And then if there's like initiatives or things that popped up in the survey from year before or planning for for things, like having more focus makes sense to me.
So, you're not saying it's not?
Yeah. And just from a purely financial standpoint, it's definitely a large expenditure.
Anything else? Let's move on to some more exchange or thoughts.
So, we've had a lot of thoughts you've exchanged. So, we've shared some thoughts you've exchanged. So, here's what we're gonna try today, today. Try, we're gonna try really hard to give you like all the different kinds of things that are out there. Try to hit you a little bit with like what's happening in the world, what's happening in our country, what's happening in schools around us, what's research telling us, what are different solutions people are trying. We've got the data on what our own people told us. And then, because there's some next steps, so that's kind of, that's kind of the path we've taken. I'll tell you, it's been nothing but complicated and frustrating, honestly. It's just hard. You'll see when we get to the results, like people have all kinds of, not surprising at all, but people have all kinds of different feelings in all kinds of different ways. And a lot of them are like really strong feelings. And so, trying to think of what's the right thing to do for our kid and what's logistically possible and reasonable to do. Like, trying to come up with no ground there, I feel like on this topic, it's harder than most of the ones we deal with. And I feel like one of the biggest challenges to doing this well are how our parents feel about things. And so, I think that you guys as a board and us representing our parents are probably gonna need to have even more of an involved voice in that than it does for us, because we all do this every day with the kiddos and feel lots of ways about it. And then you'll see that in the numbers. But our parents aren't necessarily having that same experience, and so how do we try to, how do we try to win those too? So, I really hope that you'll dig in deep with your parent hat on and think about like in, in your family and in your friends' family and the people you interact with, how those things work. And like I said, to try to come up with some good solutions moving forward. But if anything, we have a really broad, like, there are lots of, lots of ideas and ways that people look at us. And so, we tried to do really a job to bring you those. Kyle and Jeff and Mike and Katie and I have been meeting once a week for, feels like forever, but it's probably been a couple of months. Trying to add just kind of a layer at a time, so please feel welcome. They all have very different experiences in their own building. Katie's got a great experience teaching teachers right now about technology at the college level. So, she's been digging in deep with pre-service teachers in that way. So, we've all got pretty different angles we're bringing to the table. So, to start with the survey, you want to go through, any of you want to talk about it? So, these are all the questions basically that we asked. If you remember, these were like, do you think there are big problems, sort of a problem, not a problem? These are the answers we got. You can see the royal or what our students told us, the elves what our parents told us and blacks what our staff told us. If you can see, can you guys see that fifty percent line? How do you point to that, that fifty percent? So, you can see just about everything is below fifty percent. Certainly with our parents and our students, everything was below fifty percent except social skills. So, on a quick glance, it definitely seems like the thing that our staff and parents are most concerned about and closely both concerned about are those social skills aspects. I think we're all a bit worried about how our kids are, are developing with a phone attached and how they navigate in life. But like I said, that's the only one from a parent perspective that was close to that fifty percent. And so, probably can't see up top. So, those percentages are, are people who either said it was a major problem or sort of a problem combined. So, everyone else didn't really feel like it was even sort of problem. And then the white, we wanted you to see the difference between, so we were at, I don't know, forty-seven-ish of our staff that felt like non-academic Houston class was a real problem. But if you did that just by high school, which is really the group that has the most sort of flexible policy at this point, Um, but if you did that just by high school, which is really the group that has the most sort of flexible policy at this point, um, that number jumps up to eighty percent. And so our high school staff were very concerned about what classes looked like. So that, like I said, is a little bit of a challenge because we didn't even really hit fifty percent. Almost anything other than it seems like we're all, not our kiddos, but our parents and our staff are pretty concerned about, um, what kind of social skills our kids are developing. Our kids, interestingly, were most concerned about bullying as one that our staff and parents were pretty similarly um, concerned about, and that was heading towards fifty. These were comments that we pulled that were kind of representative of the comments that we saw. There were a lot of comments about cell phones. People feel very strongly in different ways.
Which was good because a lot of times the number of comments that we get compared to the number of respondents is really small. So usually the only people who are taking time to put a comment either feel really strongly positively or really strongly negatively. And so cell phones, we had a better, we had a lot more comments than we normally get.
So from students, we had everything from, I think phones should be banned from school forever because it makes people think they can be mean and sad and feel like they have no friends. Two, um, all the way, it's not necessarily the phone's fault that something happens while simply removing would eradicate most problems. All typos are authentic from the survey. Eradicate most problems, it just might consequently create new ones. Limits are needed to preserve a healthy learning environment. So they, personally, I use my phone to communicate with my parents at all points of the day. We're normally very busy and change of plans happen all the time unexpectedly. Parents had similar thoughts and feelings. Some think that it's fine to have them during lunch. I would agree that they're a distraction in the classroom and they should be put away. I prefer my child to have a phone. I would consider moving schools or districts. I do believe a phone policy should be enforced in school. From a safety perspective, I want to be able to keep in touch with my student at all times. Uh, school shootings play a huge part in that comfort of knowing my son has a phone with him. It's important for our kids to feel supported. And just like the rest of society, we use our phones to stay connected to everything our students do too. Teachers also have comments that are on both ends. We need, in all caps, a school-wide policy that everyone puts into place. And then on the other side, the schools should teach the appropriate use of phones rather than prohibiting. It's part of classroom management. Some classes utilize phones for legitimate classroom activities. They're here to stay, cell phones are here to stay, and they're part of our everyday lives. We need to adapt to the new reality instead of trying to go back twenty five years. And then the research said in the end, it's clear consistent cellphone access is harmful to learning and students' mental health and abilities to forge healthy relationships. We have to approach this holistically and consistently.
So we tried to pick quotes that really represented sort of all the different things we were hearing from parents. Definitely seemed like the most consistent trend with people, we didn't feel like it was a good idea, was they were worried about safety. They're worried about emergencies, situations, that thought is top of their mind. Which I think makes some sense when you look at, one of the things people feel the best about our schools, how safe they feel here. So if that's the thing you feel, my hypothesis, if that's the thing you feel the best about, then that's probably something you think about or concerned about. And so if you chose a school because that was important to you and you wanted your kid to feel safe, that leads me to believe that maybe you think there were options that weren't as safe. And so safety and, and emergencies are maybe things you think about a lot. So some of that makes sense to me, but that was def, there was definitely a lot of, a lot of comments in that sort of genre of things. Um, and I thought some of our kids' comments, um, were a little more reasonable than I was expecting, quite frankly. There were a lot of comments that were like, we know it's a problem, we know we need to have some limits, and it's not fair for us all to get punished and that, like, we're not using them appropriately right off the bat. So they were, they were all over the place, but like I said, I think these represent a lot of all the different things people are thinking about.
Then we asked just main highlight questions of each group. So should there be a policy? And then the parent and teacher ones, well, the parent and student ones are slightly different because they also talk about how much they communicate with each other throughout the day. So students should be allowed to use their phone during the day. We're at fifty eight point seven percent, I think yes, students should be allowed from a student perspective. Students should be allowed to use their phones during lunch, even if they're banned the rest of the day. That's at sixty eight point four percent. And then how often do your parents call or text you during the day? Thirty nine percent said every day, and then fifteen point nine percent said once a week. Which will be interesting to see when you look at the parents' perspective on that, because the numbers are not the same. So parents have a different point of view about how often they contact their children.
Both of them, both groups, more than occasionally are talking to their kids right now.
So we look at parents, here are those numbers for the parents. I believe the district should have a policy that prohibits students from accessing, using their phones during the school day. We're at forty seven point eight percent yes, thirty eight point seven percent no. And then there were a lot of do not know responses on these surveys, so we should probably highlight that too. There's thirteen percent of them that didn't know and answered to whether or not we should have a policy. And on that line, the one that had like the big questions, this one, there were a lot of do not knows on the parent's surveys as well. That there were, I may have to write a lot, but there were a lot on those as well. Um, definitely in the fifteen percent range that on all of those that they just didn't know. Which is an interesting part of the study though. If the policy existed, is it okay for them to use it at lunch? Seventy eight point two percent said yes. And then how often are you texting or calling your children? Daily was nineteen point five percent. Weekly was fourteen point eight percent.
And what was this, the student one again?
The student one? Was thirty nine percent. Just interesting perspectives.
They sometimes text us, but we don't respond.
And there were lots of comments, not just about what I need to communicate with. Your, um, parents have, I think, more flexible definition of emergency than I think the way it was intended on the survey, right? There were lots of like, we need to talk about rise, we need to talk about work, we need to talk, like, there was lots of, I said my kids, there were lots of, I'd like to connect with my kids, I like to send them out with, like, there were, the comments reflected a wide range, but all showing that they, it was very important that they stayed connected to their kids during the day with their phones. And a lot of them explaining that they have responsible practices for how they communicate with their students. They all are assuming that their student will not reply to them right away, or there were lots of comments about that too. They, they think that they're monitoring that well.
And completely anecdotally, but we were just, um, we had a K-12 leadership Monday, we're talking about this. And one of our first grade teachers said that she has on any of the five to seven kiddos who wear a smartwatch. And that they're, she, a variety of times with those kids during the day, their parents are texting them, or sending them notes or little emojis, those kind of things, and that's in first grade.
So that's a part of this conversation too. Staff, when you say should we have a district policy, sixty nine point nine percent of them say yes. Eighteen point six percent said they don't know. And eleven percent said no, we should not have a policy. If it existed, should they have access to their phones during lunch? Sixty five percent ish said yes.
You know, I'm gonna differ here. I'm not sure the not sure and don't know in that case are the same. You know, I mean, somebody might look at that and think, that is a beehive I don't want to step in. You know, so it's more because I don't know what it should look like.
There were lots of cell phones and not being for sure.
I was thinking that those would be people that are not willing to have to enforce it. I'm gonna discuss it then.
So there were definitely comments about that as well.
They don't want to use interrelational capital to fight that battle.
So then we wanted to try to highlight for you a couple of the reasons that this is a conversation that we need to have, right? Um, there seems to be a lot of things that, and I will say we tried really hard um, to pick things that were really valid. There are a lot of conversations and comments out there about cell phones and what impact they have on kiddos. Um, but when we dug in, and Katie dug in lots, but when we dug in, what we found was a lot of like um, two-way or three-way correlations, right? Like there was a, a study that had done a huge, um, span combining a bunch of other studies and found a really solid relationship between physical activity and, um, doing that people who did not have a lot of physical activity did not do as well at school. And that they then also found that most of the kids that reported that they didn't have a lot of physical activity also were using their cell phone a ton. So like a lot of it, there are a lot of common sense kind of correlations. But we tried really hard to find things that there was a really clear correlation that even proven sort of unequivocally. This is the biggest one.
Social media, so this would be the, the connecting point, cell phones to social media to mental health. If you look at this chart over here, you see the spike on the, the mental health crisis hitting around 2010, which is about when smartphones became mainstream. So there's definitely a correlation there. The one that stuck out to me was that three or more hours that students spend on their, on social media specifically doubles your mental health risk. So it's a pretty dramatic.
And those percentages are higher, right? I mean, the thirty percent of our girls are experiencing major depression or teenage growth. That's huge. And I also, we for sure see here, um, that percentage of kids that are using social media is spike eight point. So the age will map on most of them, for a long time it was thirteen, it's recently changed to sixteen. Um, but you might remember when we had the really serious threat last year that originated in Snapchat. Katie sent us some information about that with our families, but I mean, that was a fifth grader who, who she's in Snapchat. And when we all deal with discipline with kiddos, like they're all, um, I mean, most of the kids at the most school aren't old enough to be using that, and that comes up around the clock. How often, I mean, I think they're, like, that's definitely a thing. So, um, ninety five percent of teens, but also forty percent of our much younger kids are using social media. So that is by far the strongest correlation, is that the more time our kids are spending in on social media, the more likely it is that they're not really on cell phone.
This one was interesting. We looked really deeply to try to find, we wanted cell phones and their exact impact on academic performance was one that we really wanted to know. And there are mixed reviews and mixed studies everywhere. It really goes back to how it is used and what the purpose of it is and how it's managed in the classroom to define whether or not it's successful or not. This study has, so if you move through the chart left to right, it is a group of students that were given a math test after no time on technology, after up to an hour, after more than an hour, up to two hours, it keeps going. And then the math scores go up on the left-hand side. And the two lines talk about the purpose of the technology they were using. So the white line is leisure use and their math scores show what happened over time. And then the blue line was learning tech. So it's leading to what's showing up in the research as the digital learning sweet spot. So there is a point where it increases engagement, where it's allowing novelty and access in ways that wouldn't be available without technology. But then it definitely tapers off. There is a.
And if you look at that line, I don't know if you can see that further back, but that's at the up to one hour, this is where the digital sweet spot is. So I think we're gonna have to have some conversations as staff, which we have by now, um, coming, especially coming out of COVID, right? Um, we're at my perspective, which is not based on clinical tallies. We've got to collect some data, but my perception as a parent and as somebody in this building is I'm not sure we have any kids that are only having an hour of screen time in our building. Um, I think that even our youngest kiddos have an awful lot of both curriculums that are screen-based. Um, we do a lot of our independent practice on screens. So I think we're probably gonna have to, I've been walking through high school, you very often see the kids, um, interacting with their Chromebooks. So regardless of cell phones, I think we're also gonna have to think about. And we had already been talking about it because screen time limits, we're supposed to be at two hours for an entire day for anybody at any age. And like I said, I think our kids are probably exhausted, more than exhausted, not in some cases, just in the building. So I think that's a separate thing, but another thing we're gonna have to, to think through. Um, and this was, like I said, it's not a huge change you get from an hour to one to two hours, but a little more than that. And I, if I were guessing, I feel like a lot of kids in our building spent at least three hours on a screen here. So I think we're definitely gonna have to think about that along with cell phones, but also it's a little bit of a separate issue. Um, if technology is having a climbing impact on performance, then we definitely should think about how we're using technology.
That top one ties in, I think we have a little bit more of that lately, uh, later, but definitely even our, even kids self-reporting, um, definitely report that they're distracted and, um, know that it's impacting their life and their classroom performance in school. So this one's fifty five percent, but there are definitely other things that show, um, that our kids are clinically definitely in that line of clinical addiction. Uh, so their phones. Oh, there you go. So Jennifer found this study, the proximity effect is fascinating. So it shows that there is, this, or these charts show what happens to a student's working memory when it is sitting on your desk, when it's in your pocket or in your bag, or when it's completely outside of the room. And you don't see a significant difference of working memory improvement until it's outside of the room. So daily use, this is where general teenagers are at, four and a half hours of use every day. Fifty one pickups a day, so every time it buzzes or every time they pick it up. Twenty, or two hundred and thirty seven notifications. Most time spent on TikTok, YouTube. Uh, almost two hours on TikTok was the average. Forty minutes on YouTube gaming, mostly geared toward young reusers, middle school, elementary. And then he, she's ninety seven percent said they use it during school. Fifty nine percent said they use their phone during school nights. Under thirteen's are accessing, social media would be in that lane of inappropriate content. And then most teens report that their phones are interfering with their life.
So that's chart on the right, I feel like is where I start to feel really conflicted. It's like, because I think trying to balance, and this study has been replicated. All this research is in the last few years, right? Like this will only be on a super topic really since the surgeon Demiral's report came out. So none of it, we have a ton of longitudinal data on. But in that short, in this time, this study's been replicated, I found seven other studies, um, that replicated a little different version of, in fact, had the same results. So this is where I feel really conflicted. Um, because I feel like even the middle school has worked in that direction, right? It used to be lockers, now it's lockers or binders because parents felt so strongly about their kiddos having them on their physical stuff. And you know, when high school is looking at options, yonder pouch became an option because that's still physically on them. Um, so like I said, with your, with your parent hats on, like, those are two big discrepancies we're gonna have to work through. It doesn't seem like that necessarily is gonna get us the results we want just by having them turned off.
Are there, are there studies that show a differentiation between, because it's one thing to have it like in a bag on your person that you know you can't get to or you're not supposed to get to. And having it across the, still in the room, but you know, over in that cabinet where it's way harder, it's not in close proximity to me. Are there studies showing a difference between that cabinet there and on the other side of the wall? I'm just curious.
No, so what I think yonder would say, um, is that they feel like that kind of storage solution or the ones you're talking about, that the biggest bang for your buck you're gonna get there is trying to buy in everybody saying we're all doing this together.
Right.
So my FOMO, which there's a lot of research around that, that, and that's what kind of ties into this. It's like if it's, you still know that something's happening.
Yeah.
Um, and so I think yonder would say if we could all agree as a whole school that we're not gonna be posting during the day, we're not gonna be checking, we're not gonna be, that then that relaxes that anxiety a little bit, that over time that'll go away if you know that nobody's doing it. Um, I think would be their marking bitch. Cause that is definitely, like I said, that's, they call it different things, I call it FOMO. But the kids are just thinking in the morning, like, it's still taking up headspace for them that things might be happening that they're missing out on.
Yeah.
What I would say even, I mean, I think the pocket bag should be differentiated because I think a lot of it is your, because they talk about the notifications. because they talk about the notifications and the algorithms that social media uses on timing of notifications. And so it's like desk and in your pocket, it's like you feel, you hear, you know the notifications there.
So in all of those, in all of those, they were silenced, turned off, like no notifications, no buzzing, no alarms, not like, that stuff was all turned off. It was just purely your brain stayed occupied the closer it was to you.
Okay.
So like I said, this is where I start to feel like it's complicated and feels like it's most conflict with what our parents are telling us or important to them.
So when you mentioned the middle school, they now can take them into class, but they have to be turned off?
It was just the difference.
Right?
Right. So we took a harder stance this year, so before I came, there wasn't a way for the date policy. I would say traditionally it went pretty loosely enforced. When I came in, we still had kids that would have them on then. We spent a lot of time, energy, capital on, you know, give me your phone, it's not on, or it's on, or I don't have it, or you don't like all these things. And then when I really tried to say, okay, it's gotta be, you know, in a locker, I got a fair amount of pushback from parents. Honestly, rightfully so, when I stepped back and thought about it with the, have a bit of school shooting, or in other words, a true emergency situation with contacting the kid, whether you could actually do that in a school emergency or not, who knows? I still haven't quite figured that out, looking through all of our
I'm concerned at a school shooter.
Emergency stop.
They need to be focusing on the adults that are keeping them safe.
Hundred percent, Carolyn, that's a, that's a conversation we've talked about and you can go back and forth on that. And that would be an education part for our parents too. So where we landed this year to really take the debate out of it, but at the same time to eliminate some of the stress of the parents was that when you walk through the door, you've got two options. I mean, first off, our preference is to leave the thing at home, but you have your locker or you have your binder. But the non-negotiable is that it is off. Whereas I would say we didn't really push to enforce that in past years. So that was a big change for our, our staff to enforce that, a big change for our kids. And what we saw as the year started to, you know, now, or I guess even last month, was this decrease in our central confiscations and kids with those. So now we have very few actually make their way down to the office. I know our staff has done a fantastic job, actually holding our kids accountable with that. I know we have kids with them in their binders, but the amount of kids, you know, feeling that they have to look for them or are getting those notifications or being sneaky about it or things like that, that is less of a, less of a deal. So it's a, it's a spot, a heavy spot, I believe, for the middle school because we're kind of stuck in between, right? And a middle schooler, as much as I love them, as much as I love to think that we could be responsible for having devices like that. I would say brain research would say that we can't control that. And you know, if we went back a slide there, it is scary to me, the amount of time that kids are on these devices. I will put a plug in for social media, like I don't know how many people realize that like social media, middle schoolers shouldn't even have these accounts. And so much of our time is spent when we're looking at, well, and there is a social media aspect of it. And like they have accounts, like it's amazing. And then when I tell a kid and a parent that, you know, this is on their account or show me your account, and then the parent's like, well, I saw that account and I didn't see it. And then I show the parent, like this is your kid's other account, or this is a burner account. Like it's, it's amazing, the kids can stay one step ahead of us. And then we get these random, and I'm just gonna tell you guys, like we get these random TikTok accounts. And these are accounts that kids will start to essentially just post gossip on school, which could be somewhat benign. I mean, gossip never is good, but it could be benign, not quite bullying, but it devolves into nastiness. And it's tough for us to shut those down. The only, not the only, but the, the one way that we have success with that is I report it for being underage. And TikTok actually does respond to those. And there's literally a thing that you click and it says, account may be underage, like under thirteen years old, the level under thirteen years old. Every kid in my middle school, except for like two, are under thirteen years old. And they all have these accounts. So, so we've landed in a spot that they have the devices, but they're not on, but they're not on. And that's been the big, the big change.
Is it too early on to know, have we seen benefits in the classroom?
I don't, I don't, I don't know, Scott, like I would say the benefit from, and talking to teachers and things like that. The idea of paying attention, the idea of I'm not, you know, drawn to be distracted and things like that, I would hope that that is. My and our next focus is now like, these can be a distraction, right? And we could talk a whole nother day on like, hey, we're gonna listen to music and have my Spotify playlist and, you know, things like that. So once we get past wherever we go with this stuff, then I think it always comes back to what is best first instruction look like in the classroom? And how do we literally fill that class with instruction, 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 instruction? Because it's in that downtime that we wanna grab this and we wanna go to this and what, and I think it's doable, but it's so different than what a kid experiences a lot of the time outside of school. I think what works for us may not quite work for elementary, it may not quite, like I, I think kids' brains are in different spots. But there could be some similar, I don't know, like, like tenants that we could follow along the way or like where, where are we coming from? Where are we going to with it as far as development? But we're definitely stuck in the middle with it, so. Try for the long, the long diet tribe on that, but Carol, I do appreciate the question with that.
So this one's an overview of near us, the country, the world. We had not looked at all at the rest of the world, so we did. And it seems like most of the rest of the world has approached it as a whole country and said no.
Said no.
These are
No meetings.
No cell phones.
Nope. They don't come into school, they don't come into the building.
Elderly the parents.
So, and we were curious, right? We looked at Europe, we looked at Asian countries, and there definitely, you know, like this is your own leisure, like there are definitely some variances, but for the most part, the rest of the world is not important. And then, and some very tech-centric countries, right? Like some countries that they're tired, GDP is based around the type of things, don't have. So I don't know, we were interested, that was interesting, I thought. Yellow are the states that as a whole state have done a cellphone ban. That number is increasing pretty much every session. And then so we, we gave you a little info on D six and Pooter nearby. Who have, did not, I, I can't tell that either of them changed their policies, but they both made a really concerted effort to communicate and make it a thing. So they both, they both do a good job of talking about, and I think we'll get there, but I think we feel the same way. It can't just be cell phones, it's gotta be smartwatches, earbuds, all the things. Like if we're gonna say those things aren't good for our kiddos and it's gotta be a lot of things. So D six is mostly about turning off, put it away. Pooter, same thing, being silent or turned off is really important there as well. They do a good job because they're a very good place and lots of people to worry about all the things. They have a really good exception framework, because that's, there are definitely gonna be times we've got kiddos who are monitoring their glucose levels, like their things. And so they have a good example of what that might look like.
Did you see Boulder School District approve theirs?
Yeah, I just did. No. There are lots of, lots of districts in Colorado that are, that are moving in that direction.
What's the policy?
Yeah, K twelve, no phones spelled out. Starting K three.
Jennifer always really is, really encourages us to look at decisions with research and our context and best practices. And so we were able to find our context of the survey and the research is starting to be good. But best practices are just not tested yet. So that was definitely our gap in doing this research was to find out, we can find out what is common, but we don't necessarily know what's best yet. And even the state of Colorado, is that what you were just gonna say? Even the state of Colorado is offering grants for basically, if you'll try it, they'll pay for it to try to see if we can get something to work.
You can design your own try it, or do you have to do their try it?
No, they're trying to get anybody to test, we'll get there and it's like a lot of different ways. No, it's fine, a lot of different ways people are approaching things and they're basically giving grants for any of those things. And then they're trying to collect, because I don't really look for first place on here, maybe for it, I don't know. But none of this stuff has been longer, any of those statewide bans have been longer than maybe two years, most of them are years. So there's just not, best practice comes from seeing the impact, you just don't have a lot of impact yet. So here's what we kind of are trying to think about, was like you'd help us think about moving forward, right? We wanna have balance and we understand there were lots of input from all of our stakeholders, that it can't be exactly the same K twelve. Things are, they're different realities in first grade than there are in eleventh grade. And so we understand that we need to, there are some things that are very much the same, there are some things that are different, right? Just simple logistical things like leaving campus for lunch or having off blocks or like their things. So we understand that that might be a gradual release as things change as we go through our K twelve environment. And we also understand, like Kyle said, right, that we have to, you'll see later, we talk about disconnect and connect. We can't only disconnect, we have to find ways to replace those needs and those habits in our kiddos. Because there were an awful lot of comments that I thought were very practical, that were like, I think this is bad for our kids, I don't think we should do it. And they exist in the real world, that it's here to stay, we can't, that comment, right? We can't pretend this is twenty-five years ago. So how do we try to do both of those, disconnect and connect? And we also want our kids to be developmentally appropriate as they go through time, learning how to be more responsible, right? We want them to have good leadership skills, which they absolutely are gonna have to. We talked about, there are some schools around us that have taken a no-technology approach. There are some of the charter schools, you know, are sent that way, right? They have no technology at all as part of their education. And so we're really drawn to that and really appreciate that. And I, I could understand why, and I also understand, I mean, we all have jobs in real life and I can imagine that we don't use lots of technology. So where's that balance, right? Like how do we do it safely for our kids, but also teach them the skills that they need? And then bottom line, it's all of our jobs as parents and teachers and administrators who are good at safety. And we know that this is interfering with their safety, whether that's from a mental health perspective or whether that's from a bullying perspective. So how we try to balance all those things. So here, I would like to be incredibly clear and direct and transparent. We're not saying any of these are good ideas, these are all the ideas. There are pros and cons for all of them. These are literally all the best ideas we can find that anybody was discussing. So we were trying to
We're trying to be as neutral.
Yeah, like
None of these are
Yeah.
Love it.
So we were kind of going to just go through and sort of think about, like, like I said, pros and cons for each of them. Because I think some of them are totally I just, I don't think they're options, and others I think we gotta consider. So away from the day is basically what most people call the middle school policy, the idea, or what Boulder's looking at. Some version of you don't use it at all at school. So pros, and you guys feel welcome to chime in. I think some of the pros for that are hopefully that is another way to jointly reduce that FOMO, right? If nobody's doing it, you know, full pressure to be doing it. Maybe we're moving towards a little bit of hopefully reducing that distractibility in things in class. The proximity effect, I'm not sure that that's the best, but definitely it's at least heading in that direction. I think the biggest drawback for away from the day is what Kyle said, it's our parents aren't on board with that. And so how do we either get them on board with that or find ways to gently tell them, we're sorry you're not on board with it, but it's so important for our kids that we're gonna do it anyway, one of those options. But I think that's probably definitely one of the, the cons for that. So classroom storage solutions, things like you were talking about, Scott, do we have lockers in the classroom? Do we have, I think, old school, I don't know, my age, for a while there in college, when you're shaking Jerry's and things, you had to put your phone in the pouch when you walked in the door, little shoe cubbies, so.
A phone parking lot.
Yeah, the old parking lot. So there are lots of, there are lots of things for that. And I think those of us that work in the real world here with our kiddos know that that's a huge household. And that's when you start getting into kids having burner phones, and they're like, I'm gonna bring my phone today. And teachers having to spend part of their class time every day and part of their relationship capital, telling them to do it. And no one wants to start a day saying, do this. Yeah, so pros and cons there. And some places have tried to do a more central approach, some people use yonder pouches, some people at my middle school, they did it with vanilla envelopes and as you walk in the door, somebody collected it, put it in, you picked it up at the end of the day. So there, there are plenty of options if we wanted to try it universally. All those same things I mentioned with the classroom hard and managing seventeen hundred kids coming in every day and dealing with that is a little tricky. Geo-fencing, if you've ever been to some concerts or some venues that make it so either you automatically get things like surveys or things from them, or make it so you can't access your camera feature, you take a video during the class, that's a way you might have interacted with it in the real world. There are opportunities to do that same thing at school. I think the downside to that, which you all know, I'm mildly tech savvy, but I'm definitely not advanced tech savvy. And I found about five minutes away to just turn off your location setting on your phone and it doesn't work. So I'm pretty sure if I figure that out, our kids are gonna I was gonna say, our kids are usually far ahead of my ideas.
We're not banned that one.
So like that one worked beautifully, it did work, but but it's a thing. So school devices doesn't necessarily, and a lot of these, you could consider some of them, all of them, they could be layered together, right? And so school-only devices right now, we have not a ton of kids, but we do have kids who use devices in our building. There are two devices, they bring their own laptops or tablets. We can definitely, we can definitely say that's not a thing anymore, that you need to use your Chromebook for all school work. I think two good things about that, it makes it a lot more reliable, easy for us to monitor. We've got paid advance over here and these stuff, it helps with that. It also helps with the fact that from the cybersecurity standpoint, they really encourage you not to provide access to your working applications. So like Google Maps or Google Hawks, all those kind of things that we provide access to our kiddos on other devices. That if you're gonna be using school applications and things, you should be using a school device to do them. So I, I think that's definitely something that, I don't think it would be a huge game changer, but it's definitely something we could do that would make things probably even a little bit better. The challenge to that is obviously if kids have cell phones, they can just change to data and not use Wi-Fi. If they're connected to our Wi-Fi at all, I did clarify, it's either on guest or on our secure network, all of our filtering things apply. And so if you walk in the door and are connected to our guest network, you're getting the same filtering that our kiddos do. But again, our kiddos just turn on their phone and use their data. We have made some progress, I don't even understand exactly what all these things do, but we have made some great progress in shutting down the VPNs. Jeff knows about that, I know it's working because we've heard some funny teacher and kid stories complaining about, and yeah, now you can't do this. So it's definitely made it toward impacting some of our kiddos, who that was an easy way around for them. Definitely there are some positive things we can do, right? Our kids love competition, any of you have elementary kids, I bet you've spent the whole week bringing pennies in quarters. So our kids, there's no challenge, so you know, trying to promote and encourage and all of us participating as well. Trying to, trying to encourage families to participate, right? The coming dinner phone-free challenges, having heard. So, and again, when we're talking about addiction and talking about that group mentality, like if we can get everyone to do some things, that's always a little hopeful. We could certainly have from phone-free school, we could say we're not having here. I think our kids already have, I don't know what they're called, all kinds of groups set up to talk about what they're gonna do if that happens and all the blockouts and things they're gonna do, show us that we can't see their phones. Things are going to do, show us that we can't seek their phones. So certainly there will be, there would be from parent. And I think it's fair to say based on the information we got from our parents, they have some issues with that. But that is definitely a thing. We could have phone free zones at indoor times. I like that idea, like certainly that being different per grade. I'll be real on this, my personal opinion, I don't think our elementary or middle school kids are having phones at all out during the day ever. But we could certainly have zones, like you can only use it in the cafeteria, at the patio during lunch for high school. Or, because I think, I think adult love, logistically, it's really hard to monitor. Kids in the hallway, oh, I'm checking for this or I'm doing that or I'm supposed to be doing this. Or all, all those millions of conversations that you have really wear on everybody. And that's when people get really tired of trying to enforce things. I think it would be much easier if it was, you can have it during lunch. Because I think we've got to think about if we say that they can't have it during lunch unless they're off campus, then we're encouraging kids to go off campus, which I don't think is necessarily the most responsible choice. We'd like to make some options to keep them more on campus. So I don't love giving them incentives to be like, well, fine, I'll just leave. But I do think it would be great to only have a certain time or certain places. So that way anytime you see a kid that has a phone in the room, like right now, he walks through the hallway and can barely not run into a high schooler that's on their phone.
They'll run into you.
Yeah, I don't even notice they're there, so. I don't like them constantly running to the bathroom with their phones, that's just gross. And we definitely are into that. Policy, definitely people have had policies. I will say that most people, it doesn't seem like, have changed policy a whole lot. It's been more about implementation and communication and those kind of things. But we do not have written down in our elementary handbook, you'll see our next episode, we don't have anything written down in our elementary handbook about it. Middle school has the most written down and high school has a, probably the most nebulous, if it causes distractions. So we definitely probably need to shore up some part of that. Whether that's just procedure in the handbook or whether that's policy at your level. But those are certainly all options we could consider. I will say that, so like Edweek has an entire team devoted to following this for a couple of years and that's all they do. And that division is track policies and practice and research and what's happening. And they would definitely say that it appears as though the more localized the policy can be or the procedures can be the most impactful. The places that have tried to make it a big mandate hasn't gone as well. And I think that's certainly what our education system is based on, right? Local controls and trying to bring things as close to who's doing it as we can. Yonder pouches are definitely, so those are the little neoprene pouches. They lock. They're a lot like if you're used to the locks on your clothes, the security monitor things. They work very much like that. You put a thing on it and turn it to unlock it. But the idea would be that they would lock them in their pouch as well when they're at school. And they would unlock them. There are definitely, I feel like probably some management issues with that. When kids are coming and going for things, how do we manage some of those things? We still got the same issue with saying, oh, I didn't bring my phone today or having a burner phone. I've, I have never, he deals with a lot more than me do, but I have never met with a kid who doesn't say I'm grounded for my phone and still has another phone. Like that, I feel like that is like in everyday situations. Our kids do, like the, probably the biggest technology discipline issue that we worked on together, like that kid, I think has like three phones. So because we all have, I mean, I guess I just think about it from my perspective. I've got a drawer full of old phones, right? Like, that's one of the old phones. And they can still wifi, so that, yeah. So that's not a hard, it's not a hard thing. I, I mean, there are lots of funny videos about like, I saw one that a principal was showing all the stuff he confiscated over the course of a year. And it was like a book that had like a cutout in the middle of it that they had hidden. Like it was all in one place. Like we, right, we've all been through. When I was a principal, very long time, there was this trend, was everyone had those really nice class pipes that they use for inappropriate things. And so we had a thing for a while with every dance, as kids would come in, we'd pick up their bag. And they'd all cut little holes in the bottom to hide them in. So this, kids are kids, right? So definitely they find opportunities to work around all of those. I think the other thing, right, Jeff, the good thing we were thinking through with yonder was, although that doesn't provide parents immediate access to their kiddos in an emergency situation, they can break, cut open those pouches, like there, there are ways they could get into that. So I felt like that was a little bit of a compromise of they're not on easily accessible, but if something really terrible happened, they could get access to them.
See, like, that still concerns me too, though. I mean, like.
I told you I didn't see any of these.
This situation where you have an emergency, all these kids get on their phone and tell their parents. The parents are going to be there before the police, the fire department, anybody can get there now. They can't get to the building.
Yeah.
And that's shown to happen.
And they're too busy doing this to be listening, to be saved.
So I'll say from an emergency perspective, that, you know, the research that came out of Columbine is probably the most expansive school shooting research. And that's what I love you guys protocols that we use and it talks about some of this in the training. So a couple of things, right? So any major crisis, right? We have lots of minor crises, but any major crisis, I think nine, should look at these stats more and study, but I think it's pretty close. Ninety to ninety-five percent of them are over in five minutes or less. In a huge percentage of them, the cell phone towers go down right off the bat. But I will say that our, I've been doing this very long time. When we first started implementing school safety protocols, it was absolutely, you wanted no one communicating in any way. And I will say now that our, I love you guys, protocols includes cell phone protocols. So they recommend, and we teach the teachers, protocol for once a building has been cleared, but you're still, like, once the immediate event is over. Our recommendation to staff is every 15 minutes to ask kiddos to take out their phones and to tell them what to text, to ask them to say, we're still at school, but we're safe, right? And then 15 minutes to say, we are moving to the buses, we're still safe. And so that, those are our emergency protocols. What I love you guys now are to send every 15 minutes. If shown that that drastically reduces, it's a long ways back, we'll go back to that anxiety and depression. Like that greatly reduces both on the community side and on the kid's side. To be able to have that 15 minute connection. And like I said, they recommend not that you give them unrestricted access, not that, and again, how that actually played out. But they do recommend that you ask everybody, please take out your phones, send your parents this text. And to do that every 15 minutes helps get focused and calm. So that's changed drastically in the 20 years I've been doing school safety drills. But definitely they're over way faster than they can communicate with a parent. And almost always cell phone towers go down. If something's going to do through, it'll be a text. SMS is usually the last thing to go down. But our parents obviously, like I said, do not feel that way. I don't know if that's something that we can try to talk about with parents and try to help them understand some of that information. Certainly I'm sure they've never read that report. But in terms of like gut feelings, our, our parents definitely have some gut feelings. So here are disconnects. So then we also try to brainstorm some reconnect, right? I don't know, Kelly, I'm sure you've seen these before. But we used to do at university, this was a little pamphlet that was called commitments. And it had student responsibilities, parent responsibilities, staff responsibilities. And it talks about the things that we were all going to do together to try to make our school successful. I think going back to something like that is great. I don't think, you know, to, to Kyle's point, and again, this is, I feel like you guys definitely want to take the lead on some of this from aborting parent ways. But I, I think it's okay to ask parents to be partners in those things. We can't do this by ourselves. For parents, at least a section of what's happening during the day that's distracting learning is coming from families. And so we can try to manage that, but if our parents aren't on board with managing that, like, that's going to be hard. We've definitely been working on community circles this year. And that has definitely become a common practice and increased sense of belonging. And I, I think that some of that is why you see waitfinders at the bottom. I think some of that is why you see already is a little bit of an increase in people feeling like they have, because that was upturning on students and teachers feeling like they have a person in the building that they felt connected and a sense of belonging. Digital citizenship is already a part, maybe I can tell you a lot more about that than I could, but already a part of our education for our kiddos. Rachel does that at elementary high in Central Maryland, middle school. Trying to make sure that their kids are learning how to be smart. I learned, man, I walked through Ramona's class one day and you guys were working on algorithms with social media. And I had never heard any of it. Like it was, I was like, what? They do that? So it, I think we do a really good job of trying to help our kids be better consumers of, of media and understand how to be safer. They always apply it real well, but we're trying to at least make them aware. Again, trying to figure out how we can build some homeschool partnerships and education together so that parents feel more safe about safety things or understanding better how they can have parental controls work and what you should be looking for on your kid's phone and what. Because I, I think a lot of the parents that we talk to, mostly in discipline situations, either been no, their kid had that stuff or don't realize that they have two or three different accounts. Or don't even realize that they had to lie about the birthday to even get access to that stuff. Because they're not old enough, none of those middle school kids can set up an account with their actual birthday. They get denied. So they had to lie, make up a fake account to even get that out. So I think there's a lot we could try to do to partner better with our families to address that stuff. We talked about, right, phone friendly zones, non-phone friendly zones, but having phone friendly times. Like I said, for our high school, which definitely feels like a thing because I don't think we want to be encouraging our kiddos to have to leave campus. Try to increase leadership, student opportunities and voice. I'm super excited this year, elementary's student council is getting up and going again. And we have a lot of, and that was, that was a good one, right? I think seventy-five percent said that their kids participate in extracurricular things here. And at different levels, we have huge participation in extracurricular stuff. And that's a great way for kids to feel connected and not to have to feel like their phone is the only way for them to feel connected. Katie Cabo's talked a lot about how do we try to enhance the classroom experience? And how do we try to make really good choices with technology? So that we're using that our, in really impactful ways, rather than sort of replacing. We've done a lot of replacement, right? We've done a lot of like, don't turn things in our folders from the minute it goes to classroom. Don't have to write down your notes, you access the slides. Like we've done a lot of one-on-one replacement, but that's not where the real value from technology comes from. So how can we keep working on that? And then from a, this, this one's great because it's two, right, well, actually three. So our parents told us they really wanted us to work on life skills as part of the strategic plan. The discipline research is super clear that one of the most important ways to help kids have less discipline, make better choices is for them to practice and learn life skills. And it helps build a sense of connection and belonging so that they don't feel like they have to search for that as hard. So waitfinders definitely stuck in right direction with some of those things. And again, we're only a couple minutes, a couple months into that and not only really six, twelve. We had a couple elementary here because they're pally, but mostly we've only been up to six, twelve. So that, as a, as a best ideas we've got. So here are things we thought would be next steps we should talk about. And like I said, this is where we really love your input on things. But you guys can definitely consider a policy that is absolutely in your lane as something you could do. You could also do a resolution, which is more a statement of mission and vision and belief. What you, what we believe as a word about the impact, the role of cell phones at our school. And definitely consider how you can be leaders of parents and helping to build either some shared understanding or, or be willing to weather the fact that we know at least half of our parents aren't on board, if that's what we choose to do. So K-12, like I mentioned, we definitely, we have some procedures, but they're kind of all over the place. And even the ones that we have, especially at elementary, can't really be written down well. So we definitely look at addressing our handbook. We definitely can look at being super clear about what qualifies as a PTD. Because that's all over the place, especially with earbuds and smartwatches. So we could, we could definitely go on board with having a universal definition of that. And we definitely want to look at those. That's down a little bit, but we definitely want to look at how do we make it not a big deal for our kids who do need it for lots of reasons, because there aren't exceptions for sure. How we communicate with parents, how we make them aware of why you care about it and what we're trying to do and ask for their partnership and help. We could definitely move forward with expecting everybody to be on school devices and asking people not to bring laptops and things for schoolwork. If you're doing schoolwork at school, it needs to be on school devices. It's definitely something we can do. And we, we are continuing to explore. We all are, Jeff is continuing to try to make our networks more safe. We've done a lot. We're in the process of doing a lot with two factor authentication. We're in the process of beefing up our filters, our firewalls. We're also in the process. Oh, with Chrome extensions and other things, VPNs going away, like definitely tech changes really hard on, or there are any universal kind of things we can do to make just the environment more safe. And then things that we feel like are really different at high school that would need to be considered separately from elementary and middle. Are what would those phone friendly zones or times be? And continuing to think of appropriate storage and where the right, the right way to do that. So those are, I guess, that's sort of where we felt like we were at. We love your input on where you think we should be heading next.
Going back to maybe that original slide? Less than fifty percent think it's a major problem or sort of a problem. I, I doubt that's the case in this room. I think we're all more aware of the detriment that phones have on our kids. It seems to me like one of the first things we have to do is get more of a consensus that this is a problem. We have to build with that community outreach, parent outreach especially, helping parents become aware, this is more of a problem than they think it is.
Well, I think that's through education.
Yes, somehow we have to build to where there's, there's above that fifty percent threshold of, of parents and even staff that think this is a problem. I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but I would, I would think that this group agrees. It's more of a problem than, than the typical parent or, or staff member. We'll, we'll ignore the students because, well, they'll never think it's a problem, right? I have kids. They, they kind of want to do this right for themselves, but not really. Of course, we have to try to convince the students as well. But I think our biggest concern is parents. Once we can get above that threshold, then I think we'll have more ability to actually make some significant changes. That's, that's my thought. How do we do that?
Without it just being, actually becoming a worse problem.
Right, without it becoming a worse problem, but becoming obvious to the parents.
Well, I've been reading a book that's called The Anxious Generation. And it is like mine. I would recommend every one of you reading it.
It's scary.
I mean, it's just, yeah.
It's scary when you find out what's really out there and what social media is designed to do. And I don't think parents, most parents really realize social media is designed to be addictive. How do we communicate that to our general population of parents and get them, oh, wow, this is a problem? How do we, how do we help our kids get, get away from it? I think is one of our issues.
Well, I think that each group of a lot of our young moms are the, either first or second opinion on study look at most addictive groups as well. And so it's a very normal experience for parents.
I think the quote in The Anxious Generation stood out to me most was that we have overprotected kids in the real world and underprotected them in the virtual world. And that's really interesting. That kind of led to our disconnect reconnect idea. It just seems really powerful. It seems, yeah, just interesting.
That kind of led to our disconnect reconnect idea. It just seems really powerful. It seems, yeah, just interesting. Well, um, but I feel like, weren't we talking about the number of how exponentially the number of 504s we thought would increase to how many of them are in the number anxiety? Is that your answer to the whole? I mean, that's a huge, weren't we talking about that, the, the number of 504s? How much are you increasing in my brain? So that's, I mean, we spent a lot of time trying to help our kids just in order to be able to learn.
How would a policy look different than a resolution? I mean, I guess my feeling is you pass a policy, but if there's no teeth or resolution behind it, it uses the parents.
I think the resolutions are generally more like proclamations. Like they usually say more like, we believe. Yeah, like for governors of university schools believes that distractedness is a front to learning that social media is. Like, we kind of list out the things that, we kind of all agree that we feel like are the root of why we, and then generally you probably say something like, um, are building little procedures enhanced the thing that we believe? And then, like I said, then generally I should use that in more like handbooks and sensors and things. Um, and it's certainly lots of places have a lot of, and I, I linked on I'll go back and look if I didn't. I think we linked on policies that say kids aren't allowed to have them. Hooters basically says kids aren't allowed to have them. Um, turned on at school without the direct, it's, for us, it needs express permission and instruction from the classroom teacher. So there definitely lots of places have policies. It's a little bit trickier for us because I think that it seemed like almost everybody understood that that was a gradual difference K-12, that it would be hard to say if that's the case anywhere. Didn't quite crack twenty-seven because we put it in, but I think that's why a lot of attention we don't do policies, we do procedures as a, as a different. I know it's something that's universal in the past as a policy versus the procedures of how specific things are and what it looks like and something they become more responsive, right? Like when people wrote their electronic device policies ten years ago, like you know, almost any smartphone user, earbuds wouldn't work without coming. Like that was totally different landscape. So when the policies are discussed, well, they can be, it's around to change the policy.
How, how difficult would it be to implement simply phones are off during classroom time? Unless specifically needed by the teacher to do this or that. I think, I don't know that even our, can we term protective parents, um, would have a problem with that. It's pretty easy to say, hey, they can, they, high school can turn on or middle school can turn them on in between classes. But they're going to be off during class time. If they have it off lock, they have it on, they can turn it on.
I would rather do it in time that's appropriate. I would rather say the high school can access their phone. Cause we have a universal lunchtime for our high school parents. So I would rather say the high school could access.
I loved what Amanda said last year, the difference in the cafeteria. That when they didn't have phones, you heard situation.
That's definitely different from high school. I feel like in middle school because of the going off.
Yeah, but I.
But I really do like at middle school, the difference. I've seen the kids communicate with each other without.
Middle school saying you can have a mind.
Right.
I don't think we have the interest. We don't.
And I'm not saying a universal policy, I'm just asking how difficult would it be to implement that at the high school level?
The time, when, or?
Either way.
Something.
That to me seems pretty easy.
Is it currently?
Doesn't cost anything.
Each teacher makes a decision about their classroom type of thing. Cause I know my kids, some are more strict than others.
And what, and what are the downsides to it?
I think how much instructional time is wasted? Instructional time addressing it, using your emotional capital, have to fight with kids about cell phones and the downsides. That are really, I think this is a problem.
Which is what the middle school did. And they went through that at the beginning of the year, right? And now it's settling down and things are okay. I mean, sometimes you have to invest that emotional capital and, and implement the policy that the kids aren't gonna like. No matter what we do, the kids aren't gonna like it. I have kids, I know how that goes.
Well, I mean, change is the worst thing for most people.
Right.
So if nothing else, positive, it's still a change. That's a big difference.
Well, to me, the issue is the, the teachers and staff have to be on board. They have to realize how important it is to invest that emotional social capital with the kids to say, this is what we're doing and yes, it's important and it's worth it for us to take a stand.
I think some of them are there. They don't know that all of them are there yet.
That to me maybe is the first step is to get all of our teachers and staff on board.
I don't think all of our teachers or staff are on board.
Well, I was gonna say.
I mean, most of them would be a great class.
Right, right. The, the vast majority were the, were the ones that don't agree, just go along because it's not worth fighting more. That to me seems maybe the first step is to get them to buy into enough of whatever policy, procedure, policy, whatever we come up with. To say, this is what we're gonna try first and foremost. And take, and then educate our parents to say, this is why we're doing it. Try to help our parents get on board enough that they, we have minimal amounts that have significant issue with it. And to me, it's pretty easy.
I don't know that our parents are gonna have, I mean, from reading the comments, I don't know that they're gonna have a huge issue. Um, if they get to keep them on.
Right. Or, or even at the front of the classroom. I, I was just thinking, how hard is it to get one of those shoe holders? And everybody puts their phone in the, a shoe holder at the front of the classroom at the beginning and then you pick it up on your way out.
Yeah, you would be surprised. We tried that when we first started it and um, they just, oh, I don't have my phone today. Or I don't have a phone. And at middle school, there are, oh, you know, kids who don't have phones. So.
And then.
And then they just don't put them in there, those things, just like most of them.
Grabbing the wrong ones on the way out. So interested as well from a security standpoint.
Okay. Parents do have feelings about them.
Yeah.
They have feelings about it's my personal property and.
That's true.
They're, people have feelings about it. Not, I don't think all of them.
Yeah, right.
There are definitely parents who have feelings about that.
Big picture, but it, it's doable. Just there's a couple different dynamics with it.
Sure. What's everybody else thinking? Probably need to draw a whole, but it is, I believe we haven't heard a whole lot.
Well, what is the actual level of issues in like elementary, high school? We've heard a lot about middle school. But do we have any data on like a number of instances per day or what the, or in, and elementary? What is the actual interruption?
Good morning Bulldogs and happy Friday. Today's a high of fifty-nine and a low of twenty-six. We have the duck in the day of the hero.
Hey, but why do the cranberries turn red?
Why?
Because they saw the turkey dressing?
Mrs. Curran's leadership class is doing a bake sale today at three ten. And they will be doing that by the entrance and by the elementary student drop off. So make sure you go buy some treats. Happy Thanksgiving. Please stand for the class hall. I pledge allegiance to a flag of the United States of America. Into the republic through its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and have a great break. Go Dawgs!
Elementary is definitely having more, uh, I have an issue on the playground that called my parent. And that's starting to crop up more. Smartwatches are definitely starting to be more of a thing, even if it's silly things, right? Like, you can make fart noises with them or they like have games on them or like that kind of stuff is more recently in elementary, although we have had probably seventy-five percent of our discipline stuff, um, that had all of our serious discipline stuff at elementary where high school has its own. I mean, we exposed the refrigerator last year for making straps on Snapchat. Like, that's a fall has that quality in moments where almost always. Um, and we've had a lot more like videoing things and using the video from side of the elementary. So it definitely looks different. You start to see, you don't walk in elementary classrooms and see the cell phones up the way you're in school. Like that was totally different, but it's definitely, and I think we had, what were numbers at elementary? It's, that said they were bringing something. Well, K-12, it was over, or was this just elementary? It was over sixty percent. I was gonna say, I think it was just. I think of our third, fifth graders have a phone in their backpack. Yeah, that's what they're saying. So they're, they definitely have. So if it's not, I mean, just seeing the way this is all played out, like if it's not. A reason now, we'll probably definitely get them to continue. Their backpacks are in the room, so it's not, there's different issues there, but they're there. I think again, it goes back to education, parents. I mean, how distracting is that? Making sure you love your kid, but. Seems like the main thing at elementary is more lunch and recess and then parents sending stuff if they have to. Which is probably most of them, but I don't think in terms of kids, obviously in the class, I don't think it's very busy. Is it calculators maybe? And it's more recess and lunch.
I could go try. Dark ages when I was still here. And you'd walk down the hall and it'd be a third grader, where am I meeting you? It's kind of like, you couldn't have set that up at eight o'clock this morning when you dropped him. And it's, it's a change.
Afternoon pickup day. Yeah, but in class, I don't think that's. I don't, yeah. And I think we like to make sure it doesn't, like, we like to try to make sure that gets knocked around. I could see the smartwatches becoming more popular item if other kids have them. And we're just gonna see more of them. Christmas gifts. Popular thing to have the technology. And a lot of parents, I think, like, with three sixty and other things. Cause I would say like a vast majority of calls we get from parents come to get their kid or their, like, they'll say, I see they're in the nurse's office or I see they're by the auditorium or they're like, I think there are a lot of parents who utilize that. A lot of teenage parents do, I think. Ryan, what do you think?
Any phrase? Any or? I think that, um, like when Scott was speaking, I think while I do see the need to continue to educate parents, I think at some point we need to take a leadership step and do something. And I think in the course of that education is, I would say we have more than fifty percent of parent and faculty support. I think a lot of the unknowns that are probably people who just, eh, they don't want to deal with the battle. You know, I don't think that they're the adamant no's. I think the people who are knows are knows. You know, and I think that the continued education is going to be important throughout the process. I don't.
What was now like thirty percent?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if, I guess thinking from a time standpoint of when to me, I think it's a significant distraction. I think it's a significant distraction that we need to take action on and we need to figure out what we're gonna do with it. And the process of educating and stuff can sometimes be a large laborious process that if we're like, well, we're gonna wait until we have fifty percent buy-in. So are we gonna spend the next six months, twelve months educating and then resur surveying and all that stuff until that number passes fifty percent? Then we say, then we go? Or do we need to have the discussions, make educated guesses the best that we can? And proceed forward and modify if, if things aren't working, you know? But that at some level, I think we need to create some sort of action in a timely manner. And I don't know what that looks like. I'm not saying today or next week, but I think at some point we need to look at the research, knowing that our charges as a school is to make the best decisions that we can for our students, knowing that we're gonna get some kickback, we're gonna get. But I would probably venture to guess that educating about security issues, you know, figuring out some level of accessibility so that there is an emergency. But you know, also, you know, saying, hey, you charged us as a school to keep our school safe. We've invested ridiculous numbers of dollars into the safety of our school. Um, at some level, we're asking for trust that we're keeping your kids safe. And just because you don't have twenty-four seven to be get access to your child on a phone, you know? I do believe that even though the students, um, will, uh, riot, but I think the whole generational changes that happen. They always say that the generation corrects for the errors of the previous generation. Talking to my older kids, I have my twenty, twenty-three year old. They very much say, they're like, I'm not giving my kids a cellphone with they, so they're, it's coming. But what does that bandwidth look like to get there? You know, what do those policies look like to get to that point? Cause I truly believe that, I mean, even on some of the surveys, most of the students say, I noticed that my cellphone is a detriment to my mental health. Like they know it, they just need, sometimes like I think that we don't want to do something because it's hard, but as soon as like a parent, somebody says, no, don't do it, they're like, okay. You know, like it's there. They don't want to be the one to make that decision. They don't want to be the one to say, oh, I'm not gonna get on this. Um, but I think.
Yeah, my kid would be candy twenty-four seven.
Right.
I was like, sure, do that.
You know? Um, so yeah, so I don't know the exact answer. Um, I, I think that we do need to move forward with something in a, I don't know what that timeframe looks like, but in a more timely manner. And I think that the education is just gonna be a part of that and maybe part of that policy or procedure is the education and then the education that surrounds it, of saying, this is what we feel is best for university schools. Are there gonna be a couple who threaten that they're gonna leave the district? Okay, leave the district, but where are you gonna go? Because these policies are coming out everywhere and they are gonna be impacting everybody. And I would hate to be the one who's on the back end of that, that we're you know, not on the forefront of making those decisions.
Thank you. You spent the last time.
Yeah, I think you get any, any of your school resource officers or their former PD, they will tell you their kids will have on their phone. Like, cause I think, like from a high level, uh, I think for one, I think, cause I've talked to a lot of kids and they're gonna go racing with this, but make the decision, whatever it is this year, this two, actually, from a high level. But I think stepping down the board, if we make a proclamation of any kind, I think it would be great to, to do that. Then also have public safety talk, have you talk about the stats? Have all that education at a meeting where it's on tape and it's like we can refer people to that and say, look there. And then from a employer perspective, we have kids that we want to actually be successful in life and actually do real jobs. This thing is not good. And uh, when I'm at programing or looking at contracts, this is gone because I cannot focus. And to the level, if you're doing focused work, right, when you say that, we're usually turning off phones. We're usually turning off the TV if we're working from home or putting the dog away if we want the dog to disrupt us. I think parents on that level, they should understand that too, from a employment perspective. You want your kids to be employed, well, these kinds of distractions or maybe if you're talking about grades going up. We want kids to get to the next level of college. Well, this is pretty.
Come join us tomorrow between nine and four for a crap show hosted by Emma Schuler and Burger Senior Prodest.
Murders, clients, like they're so used to texting or snapping. Like it's, we're like reteaching life skills and we're hiring some of these younger twenty year olds. So even that piece, it's a huge impact.
I think you're talking to a, I don't wanna, I mean, there, we won't say they are, but like if they're like addicts and we're not gonna convince an addict to stop doing what they're doing. And so sometimes you just have to do it, get the tell.
Jake?
I echo all of it. I think it's super unhealthy now. Take action. We're, we're not on the cutting edge. It's happening all around us. So I mean, I don't know what the exact, like, K through twelve would be clean and nice, but it's probably more realistic at different age groups and different levels. Have it look a little different, I guess. I don't, I don't have the perfect answer. The phone friendly zone seems like a good kind of compromise in my mind.
For a high school? For a high school, I, I, the high school piece, yeah.
The elementary is, that's mind blowing to me, first and second, third grade.
The elementary is, that's mind blowing to me, first and second, third graders have phones on all day. Just seems crazy.
I think in the buying piece, like this is more of a general question, but. I feel like a lot of the responses that we get from the older kids is, well, we use it in class, we use it like. It's a, it's a tool that we're utilizing, so what, I would say, what percentage of the teachers are actually saying, alright, we're gonna look. Pull your phone, we're gonna do this, or we're, are consistently giving them the option to need to use their phone? And what that would look like from, I guess that from their perspective?
I think because of one-to-one Chromebooks, um. They can do their Kahoot on a Chromebook, they can take a picture of their.
There is a senior superlative form in your email, be sure to fill it out, thank you.
Like they can scan their work to submit it on Google Classroom with the camera on the Chromebook, it's not as easy as with a phone. Uh, but it's all doable with those devices.
I proved that out too, cause you took away a phone and it's like, I can't do any of this, it's like, okay, let's find out, and yes, you can, so.
Thank you.
And, and if it's a requirement that there's no phones, teachers could adapt their, their expectations slightly to, to make it possible. If it's, if it's universal policy or procedure, whatever we wanna say, it's not that hard.
One thing I'll say too is like, it's almost better to take away as much as you can and give it back. Than to slowly take away.
And I, like, if, uh, just from a management standpoint. I think sometimes we create a lot of our own problems by trying to cater to a million different scenarios and then it's like, how's it? And you're constantly like, oh, what, it was turned off or, oh, it was this, or, oh, I just was doing that, or, oh, my mom just, like, they're just. I mean, they're kids, they're all parents, you know, like, there's just a million of those things, and so. I, I will just say from a clear transparent with our kids to just say, like. We don't think this is good for you, so we're not gonna have them at all, they've gotta be turned off. Except, whatever the exceptions are, I just think it's a whole lot easier to manage and try and do, because. Then it's just all the un, you fix one thing and break a million other things, right, and so, I mean, if you go, you go. On the way out, like, stand on the hallway, you won't see a kid going to bathroom or walking down the halls ever that's on their phone, um, at the high school. That's, and so if it's, you can have it during class changes or, like, if it's only in the classroom. Like, then they just spend all their time during, like, in other ways to. Oh, I need to go do this, or I need that, or I need to be here, or they, like, I just, I think that's gonna create just as many problems with losing class time as. What we're doing.
Yeah, so like, I can't have my phone in class, so I need to use bathroom, so that I can go put my phone in there.
I just feel like we'll have a lot of those things happen if we head in that direction. And like, is that, that's my only real issue with lunches, that I think if we tell them they can't have them in the building at all. Then I think that's just gonna encourage, cause we have a pretty solid percentage of kids who stay for lunch, and I think it would really encourage them to leave campus and, um. If that was their.
And they're spread out all over the building, so I don't know how you police that, cause I think they were in teacher's classrooms and I suppose just spending their lunchtime policing that.
I agree.
Does what we're doing in the middle school even need changed at all, is that, is that already where it, it works the best?
No, I, I'd like to just keep, keep giving on, um. I love the idea of having some backbone behind it. And I love hearing that I'm not alone in my beliefs on cellphones and the brains of our kids, so I'm. I'm feeling good going into break, listen, you guys go around the table and I'm, uh, like a looney tune, so that's awesome.
Not what anyone said. No one said that.
I mean, um, we spent a lot of time looking into this stuff and, and, uh. Yeah, like, I, I mean, I'm gonna just stick to my guns, I, I don't think they're good for our kids.
The data is there, you, you can refuse to look at it, but you can't really deny it.
It's tough, that's tough. So, um, you know, I, I, I'd like just to keep, keep sending, like, send the message and keep trying to empower our teachers to feel. Comfortable, like, that's, that's the tough thing, right, like, our teachers need to feel comfortable to, to enforce and. You know, it's twofold, in, in force in any type of policies and, and things, but at the same time. I need our teachers to up their game so that there isn't that downtime, and like, that's, that's our goal, I. I'm gonna keep truly believing that the less downtime we give our kids, the less enticement of whatever it might be, right? Like, could be these, could be whatever, um, the less trouble they're gonna get in.
I don't understand, not only that, it helps with attendance, it helps with all of the issues, if people are engaged in the classroom, they wanna be there, right, so that.
Our talk might end up being, you know, hey, why not, passing period, why not lunch, or. And you guys will have to hear me over and over say that you would watch our tardies go up. You would watch our drama go up, you would anecdotally. Watch our kids remembering how to converse with each other and play horror games and play cards and have face-to-face conversations go down. Um, I would also be sticking to my guns that that might be the one time of day. Outside of classes, but the one time a day socially for our kids to interact in a manner that is healthy like that. So I would love to, if we're gonna keep them out of the building like we're doing with our class, keeping them off when they're in the building. I'd like to keep them off between, um, you know, eight and three twenty.
So.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, can we just apply that same thing with the elementary, it seems like the high school is really where. We gotta find a different solution.
Do with, uh, middle and elementary. We need to, um, clear. Clarify our definition, um, to include all the things, because it don't know that has all the things described well, so we wanna update. Yeah, um, some of those kinda things, and then we, uh, need to put in that exception framework. Uh, we need to develop that properly and put that included, um.
Cause has middle school already, have you gotten your exception framework?
Yeah, I think it will be staying there, there's.
It leaves a possibility for an exception, but it's.
It literally the only one that's really come up would be like a pressure reminder.
Question for you, and I wrote it down, I was gonna look it up, but do, do they have just the, the, the devices to just control that or get an alert? So they don't have to have a smartphone, cause I know like a lot of pacemakers have that.
Usually it is just a device, um, now we have, you had one kiddo with, uh.
I mean, instead of having like the. To your phone, you can have like just a smart device that.
We, we see both, we see both and, uh.
A lot of newer.
Trying to say is that, yeah, we did have one kid with the implant thing, that they did have it reading on the phone. But then we had worked out a thing with, uh, health clerk that they did a lot of.
I was just saying, all of our younger kiddos.
And, and it was fine throughout our entire son.
Okay.
All of our younger kiddos had it on, uh, and the health office does it and the parent.
How, how difficult would it be to modify slightly the middle school policy for a high school? With the exception of lunch.
I think all you have to do is add in, um, a phone friendly.
Right. Phone friendly zone somewhere and.
In time.
Yeah, a time and a place.
Right. To me, that seems really reasonable, and if we're looking at this progression K through twelve. It's a similar policy with slightly expanded options as you get, in theory, more responsible.
Yep.
Uh, and the kids coming out of middle school are already used to that, just going to high school, oh, now I can use my phone in this place at lunchtime. If, if my parent needs to get ahold of me, then I go to this place at lunchtime to check my, my stuff. And if we implement that along with educational material for parents, say, this is why we are doing this.
The other thing we talked about at high school, if we wanted to have is as a need to check in time, like it makes the most sense to me, but if we wanted to have, like, it doesn't need to check time that. Again, sort of mirroring what our, um, I love you guys' protocol, say, like the teacher says, alright. Everyone, you can, like, at a certain time, a certain way, like, that, that's a, a, a routine and procedure, right? Schools are all about routines and procedures, so that could certainly be a routine and procedure. Um, like I said, the advising just off the top of my head makes the most sense, maybe that's something like that, that's a designated check-in time, like that in lunch really.
Who have a campaign for parents to know when our check-in times, because I honestly, I've even been guilty of that. Where some comes to mind, I'm like, boom, 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 and I'm like, oh, wait, he might be in the middle of whatever class right now, and I just discovered that.
But you still do that knowing that, well, they'll see that.
Yeah, you can still do that, and then you just know they won't respond to you until.
But like, I, I don't want to interrupt, I, I, I think as a parent, it's true, like, hey, as parents. You guys should coordinate, like, do it at these times, like, try to be mindful of that.
I think as far as like the fear of emergencies or connection, I think it gives us another opportunity to. Give our parents a connection into the school by giving them, be like, hey, if there's an emergency, if whatever. Contact your student advisor or the front office and we'll get, you know, we'll get ahold of your student.
I will say that it is hears to me, but it happens a lot more in middle school than it does with high school, I think there are a lot of parents who send middle school advisors.
Anything just that they give that explicit instruction again, though, you know, saying, do this, this is the process, so, you know. If, if there's an emergency, absolutely, we will take it very seriously and get ahold, find your student, this is the process to do that.
That to me seems inexpensive, relatively easy and fairly quickly adaptable. We can always change it, if we just make it procedure, it can be changed. With this, with a few keystrokes and done.
Do you feel it could be implemented in this school?
That's a better question for you. Do you feel like at the semester? So what if we drafted a resolution, proclamation, something like that, to bring to you guys for the December meeting? Um, you don't have to, you can read things multiple times, but it's not policies, you don't have to. Adopt a bit that, and I can certainly send it out to you and try and get it out, well, no, I, I don't know if I can. I mean, actually, I haven't just had to move it, basically, so, um, but anyway, I can get it to you before that meeting. You could adopt that if you wanted to, then we could work on the changes we need to make, to all the handbooks and talking to staff and those kinda things. We've got December second, right? Um, it'll be the time to talk to staff about it, uh. And then you can plan for that.
Would it be difficult to put together a relatively short? Uh, convince parents, this is why we're doing, you know, some of this information is easily understood, readable, this is why we're doing this.
Can you give me this for one pager? We got you.
I just think coming out with the, with the procedure and the educational material at the same time. This is why, I just think that will help the parents that are slightly know to, to middle ground, go, okay, I can see why.
We can definitely also do what Frank was saying, we can do like a mini version of this.
Yeah.
The meeting along with the resolution, and so it's on video so that people can watch it if they want, um.
I think, and there's the more education that we can put out of a, a, you know, links to research or for that. Research type people, you know, we can have at least this, as much as you want, and then we can have like a quick synopsis and summaries.
Yeah, we had a research page with a whole bunch of stuff on it.
Put it out on Parents Square, super clear, easy communication to the whole school. I think that would make it smooth and easy, everybody on the same page.
And get Dustin's email if they wanna fuck us.
Refer to this, refer to this.
I mean, tough situations for you guys, does that sound doable?
I walked out right when we were talking about specifically what that was.
So I think specifically what we talked about was we're doing a resolution and modifying our handbooks to include our school. Procedures of the way for the day and then adding for high schools and friendly, um, places and times. Um, and we were thinking maybe, you guys work out, but we were thinking maybe like lunch and. The last five minutes of revising or something is a checking, I don't know, but like a check-in time that, um, is universal for everybody. And we get, communicate with parents, like, here are the two times your kids are gonna be able to check their phones. Other than that, they're gonna be turned off and out of sight for the rest of the day, so that we all have the same way for the day, turned off silent. Hours, as much as, as close as we can get to not existing, um, other than.
And you can include the earbuds and smartwatches, cause I do think you'll see a whole bunch of those coming in.
And what, what's happened to this, do you have a procedure violations?
Yeah.
Escalating, okay.
Escalating, yep.
Okay, let's see.
Yeah.
That seems doable.
I'm not sure I allow five minutes of advising.
Like I said, you guys figure that out, yeah, we were just thinking if we had. Oh, I'm checking in, so I need to go to bathroom, or, oh, I'm gonna go outside the hallway, so I could like.
And the five minutes of advising could always be a negotiating.
It could just be during advising.
That the students and the parents get, um, heard about.
Yeah, it's a whole way out, unless we need it.
Yeah, 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 it can also be a carrot, see, this goes all over. I, I got, we were having a ton of fights when I was in school one year, and my kids had a huge confidence area that they all hung out in before school. And we had a limited district, and so the kids came on the call, it was a long time, it was like forty-five minutes that they all hung out in the morning. And we were having tons of problems and, and it got bad enough, so I was like, okay, here are your choices, either you guys figure out how this isn't gonna happen anymore. Or else we've gotta do elementary and go straight to class and be a lot of people, eat and stuff like this. And we set metrics and it took about a month before it was no longer, actually, because they didn't wanna give up their only. That was their favorite time, I mean, I hope they heard that you thought about. So if they wanna have more choices, there's the one with Bernie nails.
Right, uh, as, as parents too, I think a lot of people have dealt with their kids with, uh, bullying. And I kinda wonder if, uh, maybe some of the principals or the resource officers can make a watered-down demonstration of. Maybe a, a very generic bullying scenario with text and this is what the school did, or. Like some kind of way to show, like, this is why this is a problem, because when I, when I've talked to officers that say, like, they don't even let their kids, like, they'd say. Tell parents don't even have their kids have phones, those stories are very traumatic and like, holy cow, and I think even just the bullying is like the tip of the iceberg. And if we can almost share that with parents, because a lot of parents don't even want to look at their kids' phones. I think they're either afraid or they're living life or too busy, right, so, but I think to open that door and unlock that, cause if we just put this on people. They're not gonna, I think you're gonna bring more people with you if you're doing these sort of key educational points. Especially the most common things that happen at this school, there's quite some things that come to mind, like, these are the things that always happen with the phones. And why we're even discussing this, and I think educationally, me as a parent, I'd be like, oh, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that, or I don't even have a teenager. I do, but if I didn't have one, and I'm thinking as my kid becomes a teenager, I should probably be aware of those things.
Yeah, we've had to start funding students, you know, working and promoting. But, and that's even what I think in large.
That's good to put out. If you don't know that.
And I remember trying to be terrible, they just seem funny and they watch people on YouTube or wherever else doing it, they just think that's what you do. Um, but kids have been suspended from that, um, I don't treat them like I'm more than once.
That's good information for.
What are common, since kids get suspended regarding their phones, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
And top.
Promoting and videoing, collecting. I don't know, I didn't say threats were probably, and then school-wide threats, definitely, um. Those are the worst, and like I said, we tried hard to somehow, some parents lost them, so they understood, like. It's really easy for your kids to end up doing something catastrophic and they lose all those kids and. Their lives are changed forever in that hot second, like, that's, they said last year, fifth grader, that's insane to me. But it was exactly what happened.
They have a fifth grader, have two social media accounts, actually have two separate accounts, so we have a fifth grader. Who shouldn't even have them, has two separate accounts.
She sent it from one to the other.
Just how smart they are at that level is my. Just how smart they are at that level is what I'm wondering.
Yeah, she sent it from her other one to her real one to try and make it seem more good. And I don't think she had any idea that happened and then we had what, one or two that popped on FBI websites, um, that ended up with people coming to me with those. And I just, they just don't, their brains aren't like formed, we all like understand that, they just aren't and they don't make the right choices with that stuff. But that happened, I think, two different times last year, but um, somebody, yeah, get interviewed by that. Well, and that's how they had, I don't remember the right acronym, but that was how the threat was initially on the fifth grader, was it popped on a hand type. Five minutes of website. Yeah.
It sounded like the key to the middle school way for the day was the binder thing. Elementary doesn't do binders, right? So what does it look like for those guys? Just it's in your backpacks?
I don't think we want them on elementary crew at all. I think we'll ask them to put them in their backpacks and leave a line. Our rooms all have those cubby cookies, Gary's.
Yeah.
And go ask them to stay.
Can they, um, watches be set so you can't get?
Well, I guess that's the question we're gonna ask them to somehow turn off those glasses. I think it's a, it's also put in black bags.
I think so, yep, yeah.
We have clocks. Not that they can read them.
But.
We, we could have teachers teach them how to read a clock. Or parents teach them how to read a clock.
You guys talked about it, but like in the game, it came up this week.
You guys, I was in a classroom with a teacher who was doing, um, it was super full class, everyone really excited to be here. And they were working on instructions for games and so he gave them like a little warm-up to analyze the instructions. Well, the instruction happened to be about making a baked potato in the microwave. And so, your kiddo is in there, um, so they were analyzing the instructions and they were terrible instructions. Anybody who'd ever baked a baked potato, like they were terrible instructions and they weren't coming up with almost anything that was wrong with it. And there were two kids who were like, well, like this says cook for an appropriate amount of time, like how are you supposed to know what that is? Like they were, it says poke it, like what does that mean? You poke it? Like what do you poke it with? Like it was so funny. But we realized that there were only two kids in the room who'd ever touched a potato or done anything to cook a potato. So the teacher and I, when we were debriefing, we're like, okay, clearly we gotta find some different kind of directions that somehow they've done. Because you can think that was like a real weird thing that they wouldn't have had exposure to, but they were like, I don't think we'll do that. It was asking.
Kids don't do directions, they YouTube it, they watch the video.
So.
I mean, we got very clear instructions from our fifth grade class last year to get rid of analog clocks and move to digital.
That's right, they did not like that.
As my kid too.
That was Ryan's kid too.
Same like that.
I mean, it was, when I was reading to them, they gave me a list of things they needed when I left. That was one of them, it was pretty funny.
Cap, we'll start working on that.
All right, uh, last thing here is we have, um, board goal setting that we need to finalize. And the last time we met and spoke about this, we had three goals, um, that we kind of came up with. It was one-on-ones with Jennifer, um, school visits. And then the charters, Casby, case attendance, um, commit to a meeting that we can attend, uh, one of those conferences. So we don't have to go to, we can split up and kind of divide and conquer. So we probably need to revisit that.
Casby's in, um, December.
Yeah, it's coming up soon, right? So we're gonna be two, two posts to that, that's one.
Maybe one.
Yeah.
Charter school's coming up, I think in February.
Yeah.
That's right, if you keep working on that, then, then.
And certainly come to case in the summer, the, um, school board, it's trying, or does?
Mm-hmm.
There are a lot of school room members taking case.
Or is that one, is that?
Still.
Albert and Barack.
Yeah, I'm probably going to be seeing for people. Recognition in the summer.
Yeah.
Are you looking up when?
So the league is February twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. I guess it's always the last week of, um, July, right?
That's right.
It's always Wednesday or Tuesday.
Why do you think?
Not that last week of July.
I don't know, place in first go, I might go to that. It's the.
We haven't gotten stuff out yet, but I'm almost sure it'll be the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth.
That's a case.
That's a case. Casby.
What are these like, I don't know.
So those are all groups that were.
No, you're fine, I don't wanna interrupt everybody, but I'm like, I don't know what y'all. So those are, so those are all different organizations that we belong to that do training and conferences.
Okay.
Um, the Colorado League of Charter Schools is a group we're a part of that focuses on, um, charter school lobbying, legislation, um, training, new town board training. So they have an annual conference in February, um, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-third, what's it actually?
Twenty-eight.
Okay, just, just loop it around. And then case is primarily for its association of, um, school executives, um, but they have their annual summer conference, which is, these are both pretty big ones. Um, the, the summer case one has a bunch of sessions specifically for school roomers and then the, um, Casby is predominantly for district school boards, but definitely charter school board member school as well. So we had talked about churning, said ten more things, the other thing that I know we've gotten a ton of info on is like lobby day at the Capitol, um, they always ask for schoolroom members or administrators to go to that, um, to lobby. I can find that date in September, um, but we always get requests to go to that. I had never gone, but, um, the league sends us that all. So I'll send you a follow-up, um, email, attorney company today with all the different options and dates and links to the registration. Uh, what we do is register ourselves and, and, um, submit the receipt and things for reinsurance to see, um, so I can help you with all of that and, um, if it is that point. And just for the one-on-ones, we try to have at least once a year, some people do once a quarter, um, but try at least once a year to have a one-on-one meeting, um, with me so that we can just touch base on having your woman anything need, um, so that we can stay a little more connected, cause it's hard to do this into the group, all of this.
Where does the bylaws fit in with these board goals?
Well, that was just the first, like we just came up with those three, so we can add two, uh, goals here.
I did finally hear back from Baske, two and a half weeks later, and so I had asked him some questions. He wanted to talk to this, to Justin Scott about this, but I had asked him some questions, there were a few comments at the time, there were definitely a few, um, in all the categories, um, about the idea of our charter school, why can't we pick who we enroll and who gets to come here and, um, if people aren't meeting our expectations, why can't we, um, choose not to have them here anymore? Um, and so I asked him to get us a legal opinion on that, um, so that took him a while, three weeks to get to. But he did get his meeting, um, Friday and he said Friday he would, um, be in touch to follow up on bylaws, cause he asked him, Rob, yeah, and he said he called, that's last Thursday. So I am gonna ask him if he would like to consider having one of his other people be able to work with us some, cause we've been a while having this, this year needed some support and it's taken a long time to. He said that was, I emailed him first time about that, about asking for a legal opinion on the thirtieth and I didn't even get a response. And, and finally he sent back on the fourteenth that he was working on it, which is a year. Um, so I still not have a date from him on when he's able to overcome the bylaws.
What was our question about the bylaws?
Uh, we decided that, um, we were going to take the bylaws and two of you were gonna join the policy committee, um, and we were gonna take our bylaws. He had some legal updates he thought we needed, we had some, I will say that I think one of the most pressing updates you wanted with the accounting committee and that's there's nothing in bylaws that we have to change to do any of the things that you wanted, cause it said, it already said we'll have a counting committee, it just doesn't say who it is. But you are concerned with the five years of board to nominate Carol or someone else to be the person who's in charge of the accounting committee. Like there's nothing in our bylaws that needs to be changed to implement that because we're running out of time, our, because we'd have to meet with the policy committee, do all of that, go through that process and it's gonna come to you for three readings, so, but we're already running up against time issues with the election, um, but like I said, I know the committee, um, and who was gonna win that and me not being the head of that is definitely what you're concerned. Like I said, there's nothing in our bylaws that's up for us from doing that now, we can certainly need one to to handle that, but I am trying to give a case for that, so that we can get that stuff settled. And like I said, I am gonna have a conversation with him about, cause he, he has brought on, he, mm, he was two years ago and then again last summer, he's brought on two associates, so I think I, I, I think he is planning to retire, um, and I think he's maybe perhaps already signed to retire, so. I think it's time for him to hand us off, maybe to, and then there's.
Is that the only thing, was accounting for the election?
No, there were a bunch of things, yeah.
But you have the definitions of a few things and.
Was it all related to elections though?
No.
No, he had, he had, he had some concerns, uh, we cited a code, that the code is really for public school boards. Um, that limited some of our authority that doesn't need to be limited, we have more freedom as a charter board, um, but we which is what it said we were gonna do, but the actual legal reference was to the, was to the public school board code.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that came up with, um, some of the abilities that the board has to act, we limited ourselves in that, um. So he had a variety of things that he thought were contradictory, definitely one was with appointments and elections, one place talks about appointments, one place talks about special elections, so he just felt like there were things that could definitely get cleaned up. And then you all had mentioned a variety of things over the last year, so the county committee was definitely part of it, qualifications of officers was part of it, um, we've changed, we don't have any, you know, um, qualifications of board members, like the only thing it references that are in there, um, things that exclude you, but doesn't say anything about like what we would be looking for in board members, like it only says you cannot families, like it only has like the, so just stuff. Um, but we thought that we could just as a whole sit down with him and policy committee and he said he'd bring us several suggestions and we'll have the good news is he's helped train us all of the charter bylaws, so.
And you gotta remember, those original bylaws were a bit under pressure.
Right, no, no.
We had to get those hacked before we could even apply for our charter.
Yeah.
Sounds like the time-sensitive one is the county committee.
And like I said, there, based on what you guys expressed, that you were hoping that would, would do, there's nothing in our bylaws that needs to, it already says it was a counting committee. Um, we just can decide procedure, like I said, you can as a board nominate anybody you want to.
And as long as we're not in violation of our board, of our bylaw, we can create our own.
Absolutely.
Procedure.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then we could do that with very, but just an approval on a meeting, so if we decide to draft a say, hey, this is how we wanna run elections this year and we wanna have an election procedure and we wanna create that as long as it's not in violation of our bylaws. We could just do that and then that would be a single.
And I bring you the election timeline and all the things that have to happen, um, for your approval anyway. And so all we have to do is modify on that timeline, like I said, some of the specific things.
So this year we don't have.
We could change a procedure, if we want to say, hey, this is how we wanna, we feel like we wanna run elections this year and we say, this is how we wanna do it, yeah. Put our own things together.
There's quite a few things that are dictated by laws, it says when we have to, how we make the list, when we send it out, who we send, like that kinda stuff, most of that is dictated in bylaws. But like the committee, it just says simply that, that there'll be a committee who counts and whatever else it doesn't. So you guys can certainly say we look like the board secretary to be the committee chair and.
Seems to me like we ought to do a procedure for a few years and see how it goes before we jump into a policy.
And again, I go back to, you don't want your policy to be so restrictive with it.
Right.
Like there's, there's nothing about that, cause like I said, I bring that to you for approval every year.
Yeah.
Before we send out all this stuff about the election. So when I do, we'll just talk about anything that you want to add or change to that is all we have to do, um.
We can assign duties, say we want this person to do this and we want these people to do this and this is how we want things to.
And we could down the road when we are looking at bylaw changes, like under the roles of the officers, we could certainly put under the board secretary that that's one of their responsibilities if we wanted to, um, so we could change things in the bylaws if we wanted to. But there's nothing currently in there that excludes you from saying we'd like, or the board secretary would like to appoint someone to do that or whoever to be in charge of that. It just says that we have to have one in, but that committee does.
Another related issue, it, it occurred to me, we have a ten-member voting board, which means we could come up with a tie at some point.
And we have twice this year.
There ought to be some kind of procedure of what a tiebreaker would look like, how, I, I just think we ought to come up with that well ahead of some emotionally charged situation where we are at an impasse and we have a tie.
And that is something we've talked about a few times, so that's, that's one of the.
Texts.
No, something. Arm wrestle, I, I.
And that is something maybe.
It's about we follow under Robert's rules, so technically the fourth chair is the voting member unless it's in the event of a tiebreaker. So we only have a nine-person board because Justin technically shouldn't have a vote under Robert's rules.
Okay.
Unless it's a tie, so if somebody abstains and there is a tie, then Justin will.
Originally the faculty member was not voting, just like the student representative, so it was added at some point.
And we also have.
I think it's just for, for personal.
Yeah, that is a change.
Always have a vote, it's not.
Just, and she's voted on personally. So when you approve my tire and stuff, I don't, I don't vote for that.
And the other thing that changed that drastically was, um, when we added the, um, financial advisor having a vote. So there was, I don't know how long that was, I think at least ten years, cause it's a very long one.
Yeah.
I think we had like a ten-year run the inch that that position had a vote and so then we were eleven, um, so we talked about, I don't know if it'd be wrong with that, but when we decided not to um, not to, when we talked about, about this creating a tiebreak situation and the board just chose not to make a change to the bylaws at that point, but those. Cause it doesn't come up.
We have covered it.
But it sure does now.
Sometimes figure that out.
Well, it sounds like it, but if you don't wanna follow Robert's rules, then we need to come up with something else, if we wanna follow the Robert's rules on it, then we.
Well, required by our board to follow.
Well, then there we go.
So then what, you vote on officers?
Everything.
Everything, my source, so then chair shouldn't vote on?
Anything.
Anything. Right.
Yeah, how this does to conduct meetings and then if there's a, if a tiebreaker.
There you go, sorry.
Then that's how it is.
Perfect.
Easy.
Easy, easy. Does, do we want to add the update to the bylaws, so the goals for this year? So that's the fourth goal, is there anything else that needs to be added to the goals that we feel needs to be on there? So we can just stick with the three, the one-on-ones with Jennifer, the school visits.
Want a thousand people to vote in your lunch.
Thousand people to vote in your lunch, there we go, I like that too. Try to attend, um.
A conference.
One of the conferences.
You're watching the lay computer.
Did we wash?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just kind of an update. So just kind of an update, and then this can follow to maybe another goal. Um, junior bulldogs, you know, George came and spoke to us at one of the meetings about junior bulldogs dissolving. Um, I've tried to get some traction on the process of that. And it sounds like junior bulldogs is not going to dissolve. But there's quite a few parents that are very interested in helping, um, keep that going. Um, but we're struggling getting a meeting set up to go through that transition, because currently there's only two board members for junior bulldogs right now, and they're not meeting. Um, so to try to get a meeting set up where we can get that figured out, so transition, uh, my thought there is, is that should we entertain a board member being like part of that? And being tethered to that and serve on their board? Kind of tying us to serving on subcommittees? Should we have a commitment of board members to serve on subcommittees as a goal? Or like junior bulldogs, for example, because there's a lot of tether to the school. You know, they're not associated with us, but they're huge tether to the school, where those sports programs are they're really tied in with our school. They use our facilities. We, you know, do quite a few things. But it's really strict for younger kids too, so it's only until sixth grade, really, fifth grade. Um, it's just a thought. I didn't know if it'd be something that could help keep that going where it's, where they're staying. Um, in the effort to keep the junior bulldogs successful. If they're tied to us, we have more structured board that can keep them running, and give them more communication and tether to our, our communication portals, you know, like the parents board and stuff like that.
So we have some things where we have committee members on like, you know, foundation. Uh, then we don't, I don't know that we necessarily have somebody on USPTO. We are someone who's on Booster Club. But I'm not opposed to the idea at all.
This kind of, USPTO and boosters is also kind of thought where they're just maybe they're not getting the support from the school that they should. And as a board member, we could see that they needed to add, they need to add the support, so we could help do that. I mean, maybe that's more than what we should be doing, or.
I think junior bulldogs will, they will vary a little bit because the charter of like our boosters and USPTO, our foundation are strictly tied to university versus bull, junior bulldogs is a completely separate entity that has no formal affiliation. They're just a private organization that has chose to support.
Yeah.
It's kind of, I don't know if I'm making sense, but it's just not they're not necessarily committed. If they wanted to go and participate out of Northridge, they could. They're not. If they wanted to be a feeder program, literally central, they could. They're just by name and proximity affiliation.
And history.
Played with us.
Yeah.
History.
History.
Yeah. But they're not like, so I would, I guess, have to look at their articles. They're incorporating, I guess, to see how they are. But I think it's good. I think it's good to keep them. Back to the, all, that's, I think it's huge.
So there, we're trying to transition and get a whole new board set up. So if anybody knows of parents that are interested in that, just try to keep the word out for that. I'll try to get, um, I'll send everybody an email of the date of when that meeting will be, where we can sit down and national that out. Maybe we can get, try to get parents to show up to it. So.
Well, I think that's interesting, Justin, is that's why they're, maybe we can think differently about what we do in those reports, because that's why they're on the which it just got shown up to. But that's why I think why they're on those rotating USPTO, junior bulldogs, boosters, McAuter. I think that's why they're supposed to come on a rotating basis to report to you.
So they're a part of the board member.
And like for when I first showed up, I think we had a lull of like there were things happening in finances that we weren't all necessarily comfortable with. And so then we asked them to report, um, share their, especially with USPTO, they seemed like they had rigged large sums of money. And so then we asked them to come and report their budget to us and those kinds. So I think we could also look at like, how to maybe make that batteries time between the board and those organizations, because I, I think that's why they come is to try to make sure we're aware of. And maybe we, I, I've certainly never been involved. I don't think anyone has any given any kind of training about like what the, and those have changed quite a bit since we've been here in leadership. It's like what the purpose of those reports are and what we want to bring, and like, if they're having any concerns, we should usually have closed, we were thinking about dissolving in September, so we could have like, so I wonder if maybe we could use that that time more effectively and be more clear about what the purpose of them showing up to those meetings and like what we'd like them to bring, maybe. Might help, because if we're already at that time, we can make a little more useful, maybe.
Well, that sounds good.
We, we don't currently have expectations for like, when we tell people, hey, you're invited to, um, run for the board and you go to these meetings, but we have like a list of like what we want them to do, like you're gonna attend meetings monthly, you're maybe gonna join a, we want you to also be on a committee. We want you to attend a conference. We want you to come and to school and do.
I think that's similar to what the board member agreements are. We can share those in advance, maybe.
I don't know.
I don't want to scare people off either. But I don't know. I find that super interesting in our bylaws. And again, there's differences between bylaws and procedure, but the only thing it mentions under, and like the title of the thing is like, um, qualifications. But the only thing it says is that you can't have felonies and like it goes through all the like things that disqualify you, but there's nothing that actually, even though the title was qualifications, there's nothing like that points anyone in the right direction of like where you're actually supposed to be going.
My guess is worried about getting anybody to volunteer to do it is why they didn't.
Are there some, somewhere in there that says they'll have to be residents of like Laramie or Wild County?
We added that.
We did add that a couple years ago.
Yeah, we added that. Because that wasn't in there. And then we added the community piece, because that wasn't in there. Um, but like I said, it doesn't say anything about, it's just, just as you can, like abuse children. So it seems like. Yeah, basically they got all the things that would disqualify you on the background check. So I always thought it was interesting, really, to have like any sort of operations of like jobs. But we could, like, I know that we have the board member agreements. We could maybe include those with innovation.
Yeah.
Good. Because that at least has ten meetings regularly, reader material, like that kinda stuff that's in there.
So I've been on the board, we've had a couple people resign because it was more than what they could take on. And situations changed for them, and that's why, but.
Yeah, a lot. We've had at least, every year, I was gonna say, I think almost every year we've had someone resign. And we've had very few six-term workers in a while. And when the board that hired me, we're almost all six-year terms. Um, and we haven't.
And that's by choice of them not running, not necessarily.
Both, yeah, no, all of the, mostly them choosing not to run or resign. But we haven't had almost any people that have made it to terms. And like I said, the board that hired me, we're almost all. The group that hired me, I think they all started for six years.
Like it was the last board.
So, and that, when you think about the rotation that we have on the board and how quickly we rotate people, like it's already pretty fast. And so trying to build any kind of longitudinal knowledge of things, institutional knowledge. And then when you have at least one of those people that doesn't make it, like, we've had a hard time having any kind of stability.
So we'll just stick with the three goals then. We'll grip that. Okay. All right.
Good job.
You'll send, uh, information on all the conferences?
Yeah.
Sign up for those and then, perfect. All right. Our next board meeting is December eleventh. There's nothing else.
Are they gonna feed us dinner this year?
We did K-Creator and did something last year.
Oh, for the summer?
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't eat much of it. So what do you, do you wanna do that again? Like, they made a ton of stuff, but we barely, do you want snacks? Do you want a dinner? What do you wanna do?
Snacks are great.
Yes.
You wanna just have snacks?
Yeah.
Because last year they didn't hold it.
They did. They had a lot.
And it was a lot.
I mean, I, we actually ate, but they just made a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We all ate.
Just snacks?
Yep.
Cap. Yep.
And like slurping a bunch of soup in the middle of the board meeting.
But we can certainly come in early or early. You can certainly start earlier. We can set it up out of time.
Let's take the first ten minutes to eat and then we.
Yeah, like we can probably start a little earlier with.
Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn. There's nothing further.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
A little prayer.
All right.